Are we ready to kick things off?
Thank you.
The older fighting the new.
Good evening, everyone. It's so good to see so many people here for our meeting. As we always do, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, but I first wanted to ask, if you're a Boy Scout, do you mind raising your hand? Can I ask our Boy Scouts, if you don't mind, to just come up here and lead us in the pledge? Great.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to be repented for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we begin the public audience portion of the meeting, the town manager is requesting the appointment of an interim assessor. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add this appointment in Section K where we're discussing various staff appointments?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is added to Section K. We'll begin with public audience, and since we have people here who may not have participated in public audience before, everybody has up to five minutes, and because of the number of people we have, I'll be pretty strict on the five minutes, but if anyone needs more time, you can always reach out to me or any member of your Board of Selectmen for further conversation. And I'll just ask for thematic purposes. I know there's a lot of people here interested in Gifts of Love. Let's save that to the end of the public comment period, so if anyone wants to talk on any other issue other than Gifts of Love, we'll start off with that. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. I would like to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen an escalation of grievances in many town departments, leading one to believe that the employees in Town Hall are working in a toxic work environment. Longstanding officers with stellar records in the Police Department have been singled out for retribution while others have been given a pass. On June 2nd, 2019, at 9:38 a.m., the Police Department received a call for a welfare check from family members that a member of their family could not be reached after many calls. According to the dispatch tape, there was a call from a family member stating his father-in-law was in the hospital, and there were many unanswered calls to his daughter. He stated that there might be some problems at the house, and when asked about medical issues, said the person was an ex-alcoholic, lost her husband a year ago, and is having a hard time. He was afraid that something was going on. He stated the door was locked. Officer Gray and Sergeant Tebow were dispatched to the call. A neighbor provided a ladder for entry into the second-floor window. The report stated, "I, Officer Gray, entered the window, landing on the floor. From the floor, I could see there was nothing near or under the bed. I did not see any doors from my position. Turned left into the hallway." That's a quote. Neighbors reported hearing music from the house and lights were on. Officer Ball and Sergeant Chase continued the investigation at around 1,500 hours, which is 3:00 p.m. Approximately six hours later, reported that they heard music from outside. They later reported that the music came from the cellphone plugged into the wall. The fire department was called to supply a ladder and placed it at the window where the music was coming from. The fire department reported that, quote, "There was a woman hanging in the bathroom." End quote. The front-door window was removed to gain entry to the house. The officers opened the bathroom door with a paperclip to gain entry. The family was informed of the loss of their family member. Six officers documented the 26-page report on this investigation, and many hours were spent copying the dispatch tape. On June 6th, 2019, the father died, and there was a double funeral for both family members on June 15th, 2019. On June 13th, First Selectman Eric Wellman told the family to pick up a proclamation at Town Hall that said the father was a WWII veteran, and on June 15th, First Selectman Eric Wellman declared that the day named after the father. Was anyone aware of this special day? Was the police investigation following the proper procedures? Was any officer given a reprimand? Officer Gray is Union President. Has the Police Department investigated why Officer Gray was allegedly detained and arrested at Bradley Airport by the police for carrying a gun in his luggage when flying to attend a police convention? Has the Police Commission and Town Manager Maria Capriola been notified of these occurrences? On Thursday, August 9th, 2019, the Gifts of Love had a fundraising dinner for $90 per person at the town farm. There were no gathering permits, and when questioned, the zoning officials stated, quote, "I've been looking into this with the assistance of Town Manager's office. We have reached out to Bob DiCrescenzo, Town Attorney, to garner his input. Since this is a unique situation, his Gifts of Love leases the land from the town. We appreciate reaching a resolution today, Wednesday, August 8th, 2019." The fundraiser went on as scheduled, although there were no permits for this event, but they received permits in the past for their events. Why the cover-up? WFSB News reported Gifts of Love did not receive several grants, and they lost a big donor as a result, could not continue with the camp. The education director lost her job, and they are finding new homes for the animals. As Town Manager Maria Capriola had serious conversations with Gifts of Love on their future activities and compliance with the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury. The Simsbury Performing Arts had over 10,000 people at the July 26, 2019 Elton John concert. Cars were parked everywhere, legal and illegal. Garbage was left in an open, overfilled trash containers. This was a B-O-B-Y concert where the ambulance was called for an alleged unresponsive body on the grass. She was transported to a hospital. Since Simsbury does not have public transportation and people refuse to park where there is shuttle service, the town should mandate that no more than 6,000 tickets be sold at any concert. This is a public safety issue and should be remedied before something serious happens. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Mr. Kalishman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. And I'm running for First Selectman, but before I go into that, there was something brought up previous to my statement, and I think it should get a statement from me. Number one, is personal information about families should not be made public, and a person shouldn't be allowed to go through a report unless they have reason or they're professionals. This nonsense. Everybody knows that a policeman, when he's out of uniform, is required to carry a weapon, his weapon. And whether he's in the airport or wherever he is, his duty is to take that weapon with him. Now, whether or not the officials at the airport, I doubt if they have the experience that Officer Gray has. I doubt it very much. They're not police. Officer Gray's a policeman, a dedicated policeman. And I think I've said enough, but I think if you're going to look at anything, you should look into the right, the public to know. If it's not any concern to theirs, I don't think they should look into the records unless they really have an interest in it. And I don't see any professional people looking. A lawyer, yes. A professional person, yes. But just an ordinary citizen that wants gossip, I don't go for. Now, I'm running for First Selectman. My name's Robert Kalishman. I'm a veteran, and I come from, my dad has been a public servant all his life until a year, until 10, 15 years ago. He served the city of Hartford for 70 years. He was the sealer who weighs the measures of Hartford, Connecticut. And so I come from good stock, and the principles of running for public office have been instilled in me since a young age. I know how the system works, and that's one of the reasons I'm running for First Selectman. This thing, and you saw it tonight, the politicking, running around shaking hands people, making special days out of the passing of a person that's a veteran. How many veterans have been mentioned that have lost their lives? How about Sergeant Del Greco, who lost his life in Iraq? How about him? He was never mentioned, because I went personally to the Board at that time and asked that the square down at the Performing Arts Center be named after him. He gave his life for the country. They gave it to the flower company. And this is the nonsense that's going on. We have a political party on the Republican side, we have a political party on the Democratic Party. You're not running it. They run it. You have one or two people running the whole town. In most cases, unless they deny it tonight, they get their instructions from the town committees, and it's not right. And the town takes second position. And if I'm elected, and I think I should be, I can assure you that, number one, there'll be less services than more services. And the reason for it is I'll increase the Police Department, but these committees that are run, and we're told that nobody wants to serve on them, which is wrong, because they want to serve, but if you're not a political hack, you don't go onto the committees, i.e. the Police Commission. We've had people on the Police Commission that have been on for 30, 40 years. They're senile. And then we read on the computer, if you read the computer, and you should read about the town and follow it and see the monkey business that's going on, and if you read it, you'll see what they're proposing. And it's wrong. And like I say, we should have left government, there's no reason.
Five minutes, Mr. Kalishman.
Okay. There's no reason for a tax increase. They say there's not a tax increase. Look at your tax bills. The same tax bill you've been paying 15 years ago.
Thank you. Melissa.
Thank you.
Do I have to say my address or anything? So I'm Melissa Osborne.
Yeah. While we're waiting, I'll ask everyone, once we get a pen, I'll ask everyone just to sign in with your name and your address.
But I don't have to say my address out loud?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Okay. Well, I just moved, so it's kind of exciting. First time I'm writing that, that's great. So my name is Melissa Osborne, and I'm not running for First Selectman. And I'm here because, first of all, I just wanted to comment how great I think it is we have a representative democracy, because I know each of you, and I'm coming to you as a neighbor, not as a politician, not as a political hack, and I honestly think that you're each going to be able to listen to the problem that we've been experiencing in our neighborhood, that I'm now learning, now that I've moved neighborhoods, is actually a problem that's been experienced or being experienced throughout many Simsbury neighborhoods. And I have a dog who's a lot more famous than most of us. His name is Boone, and he's a 106-pound golden retriever, and he lost his tail to an attack by three coyotes about three months ago. And it was a really long, arduous process for our family. It took about a month and a half. He had three separate tail amputations. It cost $6,000, and it ended up with him having a systemic infection, and he ended up staying in the vet for two weeks, which is part of the reason it costs so much money. But the bigger problem that we see is not just that our beloved pets are being attacked by coyotes, but that coyotes are behaving in ways that we haven't seen before. Specifically, Boone's a big dog. I followed all of the guidance on the Animal Control Officer's website, which is if you have small pets, don't let them outside. Again, Boone is the size of, he's bigger than some adults I know. I don't like those adults if they're that small, or if they weigh that little, but he's a big guy, and he was attacked by at least three coyotes. And I'm going to play for you a recording I made, and this is not an unusual occurrence in my neighborhood, and from what I've understood from the neighbors I just moved into on Sand Hill, this isn't an unusual occurrence there either. And I think that hearing it is really important, because there's no words that can describe the danger that not just our pets, but our children, and even you small adults who weigh less than I do, will be experiencing. This goes on and on for like a minute. Someone's going to let that kind of go. But we were kind of wondering why our coyotes were behaving differently than all the recommendations that we've seen on the guidance on the Animal Control Officer website. And what we came to learn is that there are some neighbors in our neighborhood who have been feeding the coyotes. We're not just talking like random little bird feeders. We're talking putting out 25-pound bags of dog food for the coyotes. I've spoken with the neighbors, the Animal Control Officers have spoken with the neighbors, and they have clearly stated that they think it is their right to engage with the wildlife in this manner. And the problem is that when we do these kinds of things, these animals, these wild animals, become habituated to people. They're no longer scared of us, they're no longer scared of our dogs, and they start to act and behave differently than the animals that we know in the wild. So that's why all of a sudden 106-pound golden retrievers are getting attacked. That's why when my new neighbor, I asked her when I moved there, you know, what are the coyotes like in this year? She said I had to stop and call a neighbor and ask for a ride home, because there were three of them blocking the way, and I couldn't get home. So, you know, we all have to kind of live with the wildlife in Simsbury. That's what makes Simsbury a really unique place to live. We've got bears, we've got coyotes, we've got bobcats. Okay, we don't have mountain lions, apparently, but we have a lot of wildlife. But when we start behaving differently with the wildlife, the wildlife starts behaving differently. So some people would say, well, we don't need to legislate common sense. Unfortunately, we do need to legislate common sense, and I take laws very seriously. I'm an attorney. I enforce laws. I try to implement the ways that they work every day in my practice. So me coming to the town and asking you to make a new law, I don't take that lightly. It's something I've never done before while I've lived here in Simsbury, but I think that we're at the point now where the danger to people and to animals and to our way of life is really, it's really reached a critical point. I may as well live in Manhattan again, because I can't let my dog go outside. In fact, I just moved, and I sent my dog away for two months until I can have my property set up and away and have a fence installed so that my dog can be safe. And I don't think that's the way we want to live. I don't think we want to have to watch our kids every single moment that they're outside in their backyards. I don't think that we want that to be the way that Simsbury is. So I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to look into the concept of a ordinance that simply says, "Don't feed the wild animals. It's not good for them, and it's not good for us." So I know my five minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Really sorry to hear about your dog.
Thank you.
So we have the same topic?
Yeah, sure. Anyone on the same topic?
Just three of us.
Go ahead. And I'll be very.
I'm Ann Carnaval. I live at 27 Overlook Terrace. So on June 24th, this board unanimously passed a non-binding resolution to encourage the public to take preventative measures from feeding wildlife. Much of the discussion at that time was focused on the bears. While I appreciate the non-binding resolution, it doesn't stop the residents who still choose to feed the wildlife, and as we just heard, it's created a substantial problem in our neighborhood with the coyotes. My wife and I moved here in 2006. At that time, we hardly ever heard coyotes, and over the last few years, that's changed. We regularly hear them in our yard, in our backwoods. Melissa and I, her old house and I, we back up to each other. And I'm not just talking about one, I'm talking about a large and growing pack. And I'm going to play a very short audio from the other night, and there's family talking in it also. Every time the sirens go off, the coyotes respond to it. I can pinpoint where these coyotes are in the backwoods, because consistently, the sounds are coming from the same spot. They're coming up, the coyotes are coming up through the woods, they're coming up into my backyard, they're coming up as far as my deck. In December, we adopted a puppy. Shortly after that, I contacted our Animal Control Officer to request help dealing with the coyotes. He came over, and he walked through the woods. At that time, there was snow on the ground, and he reported to me that he was able to see the tracks in and out of the woodpile where I hear the pack. He stated taking apart the woodpile would encourage these coyotes to move on. However, he expressed concern whether or not there was a bear den there, and he stated due to that concern, he wanted to contact DEP for assistance taking apart the woodpile. In follow-up conversations with the Animal Control Officer, it appears that work never happened for a variety of reasons. The pack appears to have grown based on their howls and calls that we hear pretty much daily. As you just heard, we do have a neighbor who's putting out food for the wildlife. This pack is well-fed. They have a really nice woodpile or two for shelter, and apparently, no need to move out of our backwoods, and they're coming after our animals. We know this pack attacked a 100-pound golden retriever. My concern is not only are our pets at risk, our children are at risk. What's going to stop them next from going after a small child playing in their backyard? So I'm coming here to ask you for two things. One, we need help getting that woodpile taken apart. As much as we would love to go in that backwoods and just tear it apart ourselves, we recognize that might not be safe. We need some help with that. Two, we'd like a mandatory ban on feeding wildlife. I understand it's my yard, I should be able to do what I want to do, but at what cost? Right now, all of the children in the Overlook Terrace Orchard Lane and the Greater Pine Glen Road area are at risk of being attacked by a coyote. I'm sure you don't want the blood on your hands, because you're going to miss an opportunity to do the right thing. Please make a choice to do the right thing and protect the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the coyotes? Sure.
So my name is Angela Serini. I live at 14 Park Road. So I live across the street from Melissa, Ann, and Tammy, who kind of have all contiguous properties. So just a couple of things I wanted to say. I love the wildlife. I think it's fantastic. It's one of the reasons that we live here. We take pictures of them, we think they're really cool, but we don't want to be attacked by them. We don't want our dogs to be attacked by them. We don't want our dogs to end up like Melissa's Boone, was it? Boone? And another neighbor down the road, whose dog was attacked by a coyote three or four months ago. One thing I want to say is that this neighbor who feeds the animals feeds the turkeys. So the record on my yard for a flock of turkeys is 42 turkeys. However, in the last two years, I have not seen more than four or five turkeys together at one time. My fear is that once the turkeys are gone, the coyotes are going to turn to our small pets. I have smaller dogs, and God forbid, children, because the coyotes are multiplying, they're thriving, they're protected, and as long as people are feeding them and supplementing their diets, the problem is going to spiral out of control. So one of the things that I wanted to ask for, in addition to supporting some sort of an ordinance banning feeding, was some sort of attention to a long-range plan for these animals. So the bear, the coyotes, the bobcats, they're all wonderful, they're terrific, but at one point, the balance tips. So we feed them, and I'm not necessarily talking about the neighbors. They go through our garbage, all that kind of stuff. We feed them, we protect them, and they do what they're supposed to do, which is propagate. And so the population is increasing exponentially, and there is going to come a point at some time in the future, and I'm not educated enough to know when that is, where it's out of control. I mean, it's just, you know, more coyotes on the street or in your yards than, you know, dogs or small children. So the town really should start to think about what to do, and I'm not talking about killing them or anything like that, but something has to be done. And I know that there are ways out there to control the populations, but right now, this kind of like benign neglect, not neglect, just benign neglect or appeasement or whatever it is that we're doing, is not a plan. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. So anyone else for public audience other than Community Farm right now? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tammy Wojkowski. I live at 29 Overlook Terrace. I've lived in Connecticut my whole life, so I'm not a newbie, I'm not a rookie. I am very well aware of bears and wildlife, turkeys, deer, which I've seen less deer as well, not only less turkeys. My reason for staying in Connecticut, two reasons, education and quality of life. So I've lived in Canton, North Canton. We bought our third home in Simsbury in 2012. I knew almost immediately that we had a problem. I just did not know that eight years, nine years down the road, I would be standing here pleading with you to do something, because, again, the two reasons, education, quality of life. My quality of life is not what it should be and has drastically changed, because people are feeding wild animals because they think it's cute, they think it's helping them when in reality, there's plenty of food. We don't need to feed the birds. We don't need to feed any wild animals, including feral cats. So the reason why I knew almost immediately that there was a problem was because I have a dog, and people who know me know that my dog is very well-trained, can be off-leash on command, doesn't leave the yard. So throwing a ball and throwing a frisbee and taking her out was routine for us. Within days of moving in, my dog brought a grinder roll from the woods. Where did that come from? You think it's just a free thing, like just a one-time thing? Then, not only were we seeing grinder rolls and hot dog rolls and all kinds of other bread, we started seeing empty cat containers, empty dog containers. And I know I don't have a long time, so I'm going to try to move quickly. The coyotes are very loud in our backyard. They stalk us, they wait for us, they peer over what we think is the den. You can see their beady little eyes. They're in the front, they're in the back, they're in the side, they're everywhere. And I've spoken to the neighbor that's feeding, my husband has spoken to the neighbor that's feeding, Melissa has spoken to the neighbor that's feeding, Angela has spoken to the neighbor that has feeding. I'm told Animal Control has spoken to the neighbor that's feeding. She doesn't care what we say. And it got to the point where my trained dog, I could no longer, and people who know me and where I live, would see my dog sitting with my husband all the time out in the yard while he's cutting the grass, doing whatever. She would never leave the yard. About 8:00 at night, I would start having anxiety, because I knew I had to take her out. But I couldn't take her out, because I knew I was being stalked. And I'm not kidding you, and I'm telling you that they are stalking us, because they're predators. They're not bears. They're not just ambling through like the bears and the deer. They are waiting for us. So I can't let my kids take them out. And one time, my husband thought we lost the dog. And I, you know, you come up with a solution to a dog that's nine years old and and where I live would see my dog sitting with my husband all the time, out in the yard while he's cutting the grass, doing whatever, she would never leave the yard. About 8:00 at night, I would start having anxiety, because I knew I had to take her out. But I couldn't take her out because I knew I was being stalked. And I'm not kidding you, and I'm telling you that they are stalking us, because they're predators, they're not bears, they're not just ambling through like the bears and the deer. They are waiting for us. So, I can't let my kids take them out. And one time, my husband thought we lost the dog. And I, you know, you come up with a solution to a dog that's nine years old, and all of a sudden I have to put her on a harness. She's a very strong dog, and I can tell you right now, I will have a very hard time holding her with both hands, because she's a 65-pound black lab. And they are stalking her and chasing her, and I have all I can do to hold on to her. So what happens is, the anxiety starts about 8:00 at night when I know I have to take her out. I can no longer go in my backyard. People need to understand this. I cannot go in my backyard. That's wrong. And I can't go in my backyard because the neighbor behind me has piles of dog food. I have watched her take a 25-pound bag of dog food out of her car, sprinkle it around this huge tree she has in her yard, I've seen her put corn down, I've seen her put bird seed down, she leaves water out, she leaves water under her car, she leaves water out in the woods, she leaves her garage open sometimes in the winter, I could go on. So it's-
That's five minutes.
Five minutes. So I just want to say that I'm running out of places to walk my dog, because I cannot take her in my own yard, because we're being stalked.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Is it possible for me to add something to it?
Anyone, anyone's able to speak, sure.
Hi, I'm Holly Greenfield, I live over on Talcott Mountain Road. We have occasional coyotes that come through, and sometimes we hear packs, but we only have indoor cats. So, until I started to hear about this neighborhood over here, this wasn't really on my radar. But while I was sitting here listening to the various speakers, it was very easy for me to pull up on my iPhone several reports of attacks by coyotes on humans. They will do that, and our coyotes are a little different from the ones I'm familiar with from Arizona, because they're significantly bigger, and when settlers hunted out the gray wolves in this area and coyotes moved in from the southwest, the few remaining gray wolves bred with the coyotes. So what we really have is something like a coy wolf. And that's a term you can find, it's the way they refer to eastern coyotes. Just, I mean, it might be good to go and do some more research on this and seriously consider a law, because there are studies on urban coyotes, which is kind of what we have, because we're a settled area, and they will stalk humans. My brother in Massachusetts was driving home one, you know, sort of sunset-y time, and stopped his car and chased off a pack of small, or, you know, maybe three coyotes. But they had, they had cornered kids on a rock. The kids were up on the rock, and Rick saw that there were dogs running around the rock, and he ran over and the coyotes ran off. But it's not a safe situation. I would be now, hearing this, I would be hesitant to go walk on the trails that are right near my house, because if I was to run into three coyotes by myself, I wouldn't have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Jan Littner, 22 Musaco. I just wanted to come, not as important as what we've been hearing, certainly, but because on the agenda tonight is the naming of the new park, I personally think that the name is very long and cumbersome and difficult to work with. Part of the signage that's going to be needed, it would fit on a gateway sign into the park, but you're also going to need to have people know how to get to the park. And I don't think Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge is going to fit on a street sign very easily and have it be legible. When I started thinking about what we have in town, we have the meadows, the greenway, the farms, they're short and sweet and simple. The purpose of the park is river access. There's nothing in the name that leads you to believe that you can access the river. And yeah, you do access Hopbrook, but I would bet most people don't know what Hopbrook is, and it's a brook. And if you go west in the kayak, pretty soon you're going to hit all the no trespassing signs from Ensign Bickford. So, I just wanted to say to this elecment tonight, I know on the agenda is the opportunity to approve or not approve, but go on Tourism's website that they posted today, which was Eric's comment, and read the citizen comments back about what they feel. And there were a lot of people that submitted some names. So I'm just saying, I have concerns, and I wanted to bring them forth.
Thank you very much, Jan. Anyone else for public audience outside of Community Farm? Okay, so what I'm going to do is work my way from right to left. Who would like to speak on this? I'll, um, sure. Do you want to start? Sure.
Fortress Leckman, I'm the manager, thank you for your time tonight. I'm here, like many of you, to talk about concerns with Gifts of Love's abrupt decision to discontinue educational programs at Community Farm. I'm here because Community Farm is the heart of my family's summer, because we've brought our Girl Scout troops there, because I volunteered with my company, because it's been a wonderful place for field trips, but I'm here for much more than that. I'm here because when the Eno family donated the land to the town in 1883 for the benefit of the poor, it was important for it to be a place where produce was raised on the farm to feed the poor, but it was also important that it's a place where we can raise our children to understand that there are people in town who need help and that they can do something about it. Community Farm is about farming, it's about community, and it's about service, and it's worth saving. And so, I'm hoping that we can work with you, with Gifts of Love, to find a way to keep something that is very valuable to our town, to our children, and to all of Simsbury.
Thank you.
Louisa Dastin.
Hi, good evening, thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. I'm Kathleen Mickless, 15 Muscat Trail. My husband John has lived in Simsbury his entire life. I moved up here 11, almost 11 years ago when we were married. I just wanted to briefly talk about what Community Farm has meant to our family. I've been aware of Community Farm when I first moved up here as a place where vegetables were grown and people could buy shares or work on the farm. But I was introduced to another wonderful aspect of the farm when my son's class did a field trip in first grade, and I chaperoned. And I have to say, it was one of the best field trips that we had, so much so that my little boy asked about, could we go back? And I found out from Johnny Marshall, who runs the educational programs, that we could indeed go back and volunteer. So, we started to volunteer once a week, feeding the animals and putting them to bed. And I have to say, it's been a wonderful experience. My son has ADHD. The loving environment of being there with Johnny, I have to say she was just amazing with him, has been great for his self-esteem, for teaching him responsibility. It's sort of an oasis after a busy day at school, to go and spend time away from the iPad, away from homework, away from the TV, being with the animals. So, when I dropped my son at camp this past Monday, he did the last week, I was really distressed when I found out that the programs were going to be ending, the educational programs. Heartbroken, I would say furious. I want to share that at the end of that first day of camp, I asked my son how camp went, and he said, "Mom, camp was great." He never says that about camp. And then he asked if he could do extended hours for the rest of the week, he wanted to stay. I don't work, so I don't need him to do it, but he just absolutely loved it. So, I just want to express my dismay that the educational programs are going away. I think we have a real jewel in this town with Community Farm. It's a unique place, not a lot of other towns can say they have a place like that. I also feel very strongly that farm-to-school programs are important, and I think it's a movement that's growing. I know that Avon and Granby have very strong farm-to-school programs, and I'd like to actually see it grow. And I really feel like Johnny was growing it, you know, the last six years, I've just been seeing more and more happening and more wonderful things. So, I just wanted to get up and express, you know, how much we're going to miss it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eugenia Drake. I actually live in East Granby, and I'm a little nervous, I definitely wasn't planning on speaking this evening. Why I'm speaking tonight is I'm one of the former educators at Community Farms, and while I think it's really important that we talk about the field trips and the summer camp, I really want to focus for a moment on the educational aspect of it, seeing firsthand just the magic and the wonder that the programs bring, but it's just not a fun day full of rainbows and unicorns at the farm. The children actually do learn, it's an outside classroom. We take the Common Core standards that are required for the schools and bring it onto the farm. So we have four classes, four times the schools come. Fall, like late fall, early spring, and late spring. And we have local schools, whether it be Simsbury, Granby, partner with Hartford Schools, and most of them are crack schools, inner-city schools. I'm from Brooklyn, so, you know, inner-city. We forget, living here in Simsbury, East Granby, Granby, what a resource we have, because we're so used to it. These children have never been to the country, this is the country for them. And to have them partnered with children from this area of the same age group, they meet four times a year, they build friendships, but it's an educational program. I've taught macro invertebrates, it's my favorite, that was my favorite subject to do with the kids, because what's a macro invertebrate? We went down to the stream, I had them collect bugs, bring them back to the classroom, we did a slideshow, and then the kids all got to hold them, talk about them, experiment with them. We had a composting pile, that the kids could just get right into the composting pile. The magic that these children saw pulling carrots up from the ground, this is where my carrot comes from? I mean, and then we did a lot of cooking with them, it was teaching them, where does your food come from? Healthy living, interacting with the animals, responsibility, but also taking their classrooms from the classroom, which not every child is a cookie-cutter student, and bringing them outside into the outdoors, rain or shine, snow, they're out there. And it really built character, they had to do journaling and build friendships, and I also built lifelong friends. I can go on and on about Johnny. Why do we have farm-to-table dinners there? She got that beautiful pavilion donated, that was her, she did that, that was the Community Farms. Why do we have that educational greenhouse, which is solar-powered, it's an outdoor classroom? The whole classroom's been renovated, and now all of a sudden we're not doing it anymore? What's going to happen to the kids that don't go on the field trips, who saw the older children going on the field trips, now all of a sudden they can't go anymore? I work in the Granby school system, Johnny comes into the Granby school, she teaches the kids there, and then we take them and we bring them to the farm. So yes, we have a great time at the camps, kids' night out, farm-to-table, family days, farm stand, but it's really the educational programs that are the heart and soul of the Community Farms. And not just for our children, but for children who do not have access on a daily basis of what we have access here and so fortunate to have access here. So I'm really disappointed to see that the educational program is being discontinued after all the work that has been done into it, not only physically improving the grounds and the amenities, but also how the program has really grown in the last five years to meet the alignment of the Common Core standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope before we're done, we get to have some of the students speak, I'd love to hear what they have to say. My name is Timothy Goodwin, I was the first executive director of Community Farm in Simsbury back in 2008 and 2009. Lived at 73 Wilkett Road, and then when I moved to become a principal in the local district, I was at Acrewood Road, so I've been in Simsbury for quite a while. I currently live 282 Vine Street in Hartford. When we first started the farm, it was myself and a group of Simsbury residents, the late Dunney Barney, who served on the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think, for about 35 years, Diane Nash, the former head of Ethel Walker School, Bessie Spears. And we had this vision, and actually the vision came to me when I was in my house of worship, and it was that this idea of people from many ethnicities and cultures all playing together in the Community Farm in Simsbury fields. And so when we started to move on that vision, I'll never forget the last time I heard applause in here, is when Dunney Barney stood up before he passed and said, "We're the only farm in the state that donates 100% of our produce to families in need and serves almost 1,000 students a year." That was powerful. I would just love to see that continue, I know that there's some financial difficulties now, but I think that if the town, or Gifts of Love, or the Board of Ed could somehow find a way to find some money or raise some money or something, you know, in this day when across the nation we see some sort of hate politics coming up, if we could be a leader in terms of bringing people together and continue to bring people together across different ethnicities and cultures, I think it puts Simsbury back on the map. And when you look at the way that education taught sustainability, organic farming, environmentalism, those are things that we desperately need, even when you hear about the coyote problem, this is something that can be discussed and talked about through the farm setting. So, I would just hate to see the education piece go, it was too important to the farm and the vision in the beginning. When Gifts of Love merged and I went to become a principal, it exploded even more. I was so impressed with what the former executive director Diana Good was able to do with the greenhouses and such. And now I understand that there's new leadership, and I also understand that it's a financial issue, but if there was any way to find the money to keep this thing going, I think it would be a huge benefit to the town. My daughter also attends camp, she couldn't be here tonight, but when she had to tell me on last week, the last day of camp, that they had to move the alpacas, she was tears in her eyes, and they had to go to another farm and be friends with other alpacas. But it's meant a lot to me, my family, as the first executive director, it's near to my heart, and if the town, or Gifts of Love, needs any support in terms of thinking through ways to bring in some money, raise some money and keep this thing alive, I would donate, you know, several hours a week to try to make it happen.
Thank you, Sam.
You bet. And I hope some students will come up, because I'd love to hear from you guys.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes.
I'm not pushing you out here.
No, it's all right.
Hi, I'm Lisa Burke, 20 Michael Road in Simsbury. My husband's family's been in town for over 100 years, we have a business in town, and we're very supportive of our town and growing our town. Our kids also have had the opportunity to participate in the Gifts of Love camp, and like everybody else, nobody's going to say it's a bad camp, it's a phenomenal program, and it's just really wonderful for the kids to be in a really, kind of very tech-free environment. And my understanding is that the original agreement with Gifts- we had found out ahead of time, it could have been budgeted for, there could have been some private fundraising done. But I really feel that it brings a lot to the town, and it really is an asset that belongs to the town. And we need to think as owners of the land, how can we best utilize this to meet the needs of the community? So yes, we have to meet the original intention, which is to donate food, and Gifts of Love does that, and it's a great program. But our agreement with Gifts of Love is also that they provide education. And their programming with the schools is excellent, their camp is excellent. And I really feel like there has to be a way to somehow find a way to continue that, whether it's raising tuition at the camp, or some other private fundraising opportunities. I know, obviously, it's not like the town has just got huge slush funds to fund everything we want to fund, if only, but there has to be some way that we can find some way to continue this, and even build on it and grow it, and maybe perhaps even take more advantage of it, get our students at the camp more often, maybe have a town camp, if it's not a Gifts of Love camp, at the facility, if that was feasible. I know there's a number of different opportunities. So I really hope that this remains on the agenda, that it's something that we look at, and really put a lot of thought, because as you can see, for the number of people that are here today, it's absolutely something that the community cares about. I think it really is one of the things that makes Simsbury what Simsbury is, is the facilities. And that's what brings people here. That's what brings families here. And, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Susan.
Hi, Susan Privison. I'm a former resident of Simsbury, but currently residing at 164 Keeney Street in Glastonbury. What I would like to do is read a letter that is going to all of our constituents. This is our 30th anniversary of Gifts of Love, and we still have people that have been with us and supported us for over 30 years in our core mission. Dear friends, Gifts of Love was built in the homes and garages of community members turned philanthropists over 30 years ago. And that was right here in Simsbury. I don't know if any of you remember that. They started the organization with one goal, help those in need. Gifts of Love served over 20,000 families in need in 2018 alone. We are on track to bypass that number in 2019. And one of the reasons that we're on track to bypass that is because of what's known as the ALIS population. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they represent the underemployed in Connecticut. And they... It's the United Way that named them ALIS, Asset Limited, Income Constrained, but Employed. It used to be one in eight families in greater Hartford, including Farmington Valley. It is now one in six families. We service 300 to 350 families and all their children every single month. We provide 365 backpacks to children who don't have food every week. From the farm program to the educational programs, each program has a different funding source and different relationships to our community and Gifts of Love mission. Each of our programs hold a special place in our hearts and our board members, employees, volunteers, and donors. Gifts of Love Farm, formerly named as Community Farms at Simsbury, was leased by Gifts of Love by the town of Simsbury in 2013. There's a plaque on the farmhouse from Amos Eno, which had originally deeded the farm to the town for one purpose, feed the less fortunate. And anybody can see the deed and read the deed. As time progressed, more programs started taking place on the farm, including the Gifts of Love Education and Summer Program. But in the nonprofit sector, which I've worked in for 40 years, and I know all too well, sometimes you lose your funding. So that's what's happened to here, and it's necessary to maintain the education program. Unfortunately, the education program will be coming to an end with the conclusion of the year's summer camp. The summer camp comes to an end. We hope that families will explore and support the numerous farm camps throughout Farmington Valley. As some of you may know, and it was certainly on the news broadcast, we originally had $160,000 a year to run the program, but the truth is, it's $190,000 to run that program. It's not supported by a farm-to-table dinner. That's a lot of money to raise. And we were to the point where we had written so many grants for... to keep the education going, that we were losing money to support our core mission. And so the board took four months and really researched this, and came to the very difficult decision that we had to let go of the education and the camp so we could continue our core mission, so that we could continue to feed people in need. We will continue to meet the goals with vigor through our farm program by growing and distributing fresh, organic produce to Simsbury Social Services, Gifts of Love Food Pantry, and the YMCA Women's and Children's Shelter, and other community organizations within our support... your support, sorry. Our plan is to increase production at the Gifts of Love farm so that we can help families in need in the greater Hartford area. The Gifts of Love farm plans to begin crop production in the barns to ensure that we can deliver fresh, organic produce to families year-round, not just summertime. Although the educational programs must come to an end, there will always be educational opportunities at the Gifts of Love farm. We encourage families to engage in volunteering at the farm, remain connected to outdoor experiences through farm education firsthand. We will consider proposals, we talked to the first electorate about this, to continue a camp, but we can only consider proposals that have a three-to-five solid, sustainable funding plan. Because we don't want to start it up again and have to cancel it again in a year because there isn't money. So that is the one thing that we're asking for if you're submitting a proposal. One thing that will always remain the same at Gifts of Love is the goal, to help those in need. Without you and your support, we won't be able to meet the goal. So for all of you in here, and some of you have introduced yourselves tonight as people that are supporters of Gifts of Love, we appreciate your support, and that we hope that you will continue to support our core mission as we go through a difficult transition.
Thank you very much, Susan. And we're grateful for the food that the farm donates to our food closet. Yes.
And my name's Eliana.
I'm Tessa Stroh.
I'm Perry Gorb. This is Caroline. And we all go to the Community Farm Camp, and we really think that Simsbury is going to miss the Community Farm Education Program. I know we're all looking forward to going on the field trip in sixth grade, but we won't be able to because there's no more educational program. And summer camp was really, really fun.
Yeah. I didn't have a chance to go to summer camp this year, and I kind of am disappointed because I really loved helping the animals and like caring for them, and it was really fun. And I'm going to miss it.
So I've been volunteering at the farm for four years, taking care of the animals, feeding them, putting to bed. I've also been going to the camp and just seeing the animals go away. Just, I mean, I can't really volunteer with the animals anymore, no more camp. I know I've made a lot of good friends from the camp, and just seeing that go away.
What?
I've gone to the camp, and I really enjoy it. It's probably my favorite camp I've ever gone to, and I really like to see the animals. They're one of my favorite parts of the camp.
I love the camp.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Katie Magory. I live in... on Carver Circle, not in. I wanted to address the comment we've heard about philanthropy and how Gifts of Love is feeding the hungry, and, you know, a lot of the comments have been about the loss of the farm camp, but I want to connect the two, that philanthropy and a generous heart is taught. And I think Gifts of Love is that place where we have the opportunity. So when you give away an opportunity for children, especially, you know, we are in an interesting time in our nation. We are in an interesting impasse where things are not necessarily always civil, and one of the places where you can go and learn philanthropy, where you can learn that there are less fortunate people, where you can learn that there's a food chain of events that lead to certain outcomes. This camp did that. And, you know, I don't want it to be a focus that we're losing a camp. I want it to be a focus that we're losing an avenue to educate children that isn't available all the time in traditional education. The camp was that for my family. It wasn't necessarily just a good place to go have fun. They certainly did. But it was a place to continue a mission that we like as a family to help others. Our church supports Gift of Love. The Community Farm was an opportunity for the kids to have fun and learn that there are others in need, and that the world is a bigger place than just themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Hi. My name is Caitlin Sodary. I've attended Simsbury schools from when I was in kindergarten until eighth grade. I'm an upcoming sophomore at Suffield High School, participating in the agri-science program. This summer will mark five years since I've been attending the Community Farm Camp. And besides that, I've also participated in many school field trips with squadron line while I was in elementary school. My experience through many field trips and years I have attended camp have helped influence my love in agriculture. The farm and Johnny have been very inspiring in growing my passion of me wanting to further my education in agriculture by attending the Suffield Agri-science program. Johnny even wrote me a letter of recommendation for my application to get into the agri-science program. I have won awards in school for large animals, and now I raise... I am raising 11 chickens at home for my SAE project for school. Without having the experiences I've had at the farm, this has... this may not have been the path I would have taken. So please let the education program continue so today's kids... so today's kids know what agriculture is and where our food comes from, so we can continue to drive a passion for agriculture.
I'm going to embarrass some adolescents. You've seen a lot of adorable kids. Adorable kids grow up to be adolescents. These three happen to be scouts here in Simsbury. Eric, you might recognize two of them because you were at their Eagle Court of Honors. Their Eagle projects were... was at the Simsbury farm, both of them in support of the education program. And there are several other scouts in our troop that have done projects for the education program. So even though the education program's intent is to teach others, these kids and others... my daughter's in the hall, she doesn't want to come in. She was a camp counselor there. My kids have... she's waving to me. My kids have, every Saturday morning for the past five years, we have gotten up and we have cleaned stalls and fed animals and turned out cows and done all sorts of things. And lots of the boys from the scout troop have come and helped. The education program has taught all of them in... without teaching anything, just by our being there, by the kids knowing that there is a way to give back. By Michael raised... I just happen to know this, I can embarrass him because I happen to be his mother, sorry, son. He raised about $1,800 to build a loafing shed for the Community Farm. He came in front of this board to be approved for it. You all remember. Nick, you did a wonderful thing with the outdoor classroom and the thing and the, you know, my description. I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm sorry. I just felt the main point, the whole reason why I really felt like I wanted to drag the boys up and embarrass them and get in front of you, is because not only is the education program affecting the young kids, not only is it teaching through the curriculum that it teaches, but it is teaching in the sneaky backdoor, really excellent ways for these boys to give their time and their energy and their effort. Just wanted y'all to know that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. (applause) Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes.
Hi, I'm Jennifer O'Day. I live at 7 Brownstone Turn in Weetalk. I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm not prepared, but I'm a former board member of Gifts of Love, and my kids have been going to the camp since Tim was there. And I'm not exactly sure how many years we've been doing it, but every week for, I don't know how many years, we've been there, usually at night. And eventually, it was just me at night mucking out stalls and feeding my ducks and taking care of the animals. And I'm sorry, I get a little emotional with this because it's a big part of our family. I left the board because I felt like I could do better in other ways. I'm not really a numbers person, or... but I've been doing the backpack program at Gifts of Love for, I don't know, maybe 10 years, and so I'm there every week as well. I was on the board when we were getting the farm and merging with the farm, and it was an exciting time, and not too long ago. And I've seen all the Eagle Scout projects that were built on the farm. My kids... we now have three chickens at home because of the farm, so I blame them for that. But basically, I... the things that they have learned, and the friends that they've made, and the service that they've done and that we've done as a family, we built... my husband built that funny thing the goats jump on. It's kind of embarrassing to him, but there you have it. And we used to go there as a family every week to volunteer, up until this summer, when my daughter had surgery and we couldn't go. And we've missed it, and I was looking forward to going back. But I understand about, you know, funding, obviously, and about Gifts of Love's main mission was to feed people on the farm. But what it became was something larger, and it was about feeding the community in various ways, and bringing the kids from, you know, the city to spend a day in the country, and there are different kinds of food. There are different kinds of education. And I know that the kids who... some of the kids who volunteered at the farm were even coming from pretty far away, and one, I believe, was even coming from Hartford. I don't know where I'm going with this, but basically, I... while I understand funding is an issue, I do feel like when you have a community farm and you're having trouble getting that funding, for whatever reason, asking the community for help would have been a nice thing to do. And involving the community instead of just, you know, cutting it off and letting people go who have worked so hard to build the farm. And the projects that the Eagle Scouts have built at that farm are amazing. I don't know if you've ever been there. And to just send the animals away, and it's... I think it's... needs to be understood that that is going to affect people. I know that you have a business to run, and I was there for the meetings, you know, about the farm. And we never really knew how it was going to work, but we were driven to make it work, and it was sort of a dream. And when it started to work and it became this huge thing, it was just amazing to watch. And the educational piece at school, I would encourage... And the, the educational piece at school, I would encourage the school or the, the board to find another way to continue that. I mean, you'll never replace Johnny. I, I've never met anyone like her. And she is probably the biggest loss of this. But anyway, I just wanted to express my support and, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Hi, Jessica Brice, one of your North Saddle Ridge. This is my son Liam, who has attended camp and field trips there. I wasn't planning on saying anything. Everyone has done an incredible job summarizing their feelings about the farm and how it has such an impact on the community in a myriad of ways. And I don't think anybody disputes the value Gifts of Love has brought to Simsbury, to Farmington Valley, to the Hartford area. Its mission is important and valuable and I think everyone here supports it and we'd like to continue to support it. The only reason I wanted to get up is to say that I think you can get the sense from everyone who's here, those who've spoken, those who hasn't, who have not yet spoken, is that the community really rallies around Community Farm and there's a reason I think it was initially called that and should continue to be called that. And that in a very short amount of time, we have hundreds of people on our local Facebook page who are adamant to do something to prevent the educational programs from disappearing. And I started the page, so I feel like I'll speak for those on the page. We look forward to working with, as a community, Gifts of Love, the town, the Board of Ed, to find a solution so that the programs don't disappear, so that Johnny doesn't disappear from our farm and that our community continue, can continue to reap the benefits of this resource, not just in Simsbury, but our larger community in the Hartford area. And that's all I really wanted to say. So thank you all for coming and supporting us over tonight. And every kid you see here, every parent you see nodding your head, they are fully supportive of Community Farm.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Heather Carroll and many years ago, I was looking for a way for my girls to do some hands-on volunteering, but at the time they were four and six. So there wasn't a lot of opportunity for them to do some volunteering. So I reached out to a bunch of farms and I thought, ooh, maybe they would let us. There was no farm that would let young kids volunteer until I found the Community Farm of Simsbury. So my girls started when they were four and six years old, mucking out stalls, learning how to, you know, use a wheelbarrow without tipping it over and all the really hard work and responsibility that came with that. Through that, they of course learned about Gifts of Love's important mission and then have now been long-term volunteers with Gifts of Love as well. And we love the organization. You know, I wanted to say that, you know, seeing my kids and learning what they've learned through this process about hard work and commitment, but also philanthropy and giving back and about organizations like Gifts of Love that makes such an important difference in our community. And I think that it's an incredible shame that we're losing the educational components of this farm. But I think that we can see from the outpouring of support that we have here in the hallway filled with people that it's, that maybe it's not quite right that all the burden, the financial burden be on Gifts of Love. The whole town benefits from this. The whole region benefits from this. And maybe it is time that we work together and start some sort of community action where we can work together as a town, as a Board of Education, as a nonprofit, as community members who care, that we could actually do something to make this work. And I don't think that coming out of this, there's going to be some sort of binary thing like yes, we'll keep it or no, we won't. I think maybe this should just be a start of a conversation where we can work collaboratively together to figure out a way to harness all the enthusiasm, all the support that we see here to help the town to continue to benefit. You're hearing from all these kids and all these families who are benefiting tremendously and that of course benefits the town and helps you have responsible people who care about the town. And maybe it's only fair that we start to work more collaboratively so that we can preserve the gifts that we have here. Do you guys want to say anything else? No, Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to keep everyone much longer tonight. I have a repetitive message, but I promised my daughter I'd come up. We moved here about three and a half years ago. It's going to make me cry. This is why I don't talk in public. Well, we, we moved here, we didn't know anybody. We wanted to get chickens. It was a dream, our city living dream, that we wanted to have chickens, we moved here. And we got here, I needed a camp for my kids. The town camp was actually full. I called Gifts of Love via Google and I put my kid in there like, and said a little prayer that it would go well. And from there, we developed our relationship with Johnny and Gifts of Love and the farm. And I wanted the kids to understand that if we got chickens, that they were like going to live through the winter and we had to keep them alive. And so we started volunteering. All through the winter that first year we moved here, so we would learn, like that it was in the cold, dark night, you'd still have to make sure your chickens are okay. And we would go on Friday nights and put away the animals. And that was our hot Friday night coming from New York City. We'd go to take alpacas and my husband fried away the sheep that did not like him. So it was a great experience. I think that it's, as someone else mentioned earlier, it echoes through the people we've met. We tell our stories of the chickens. We have neighbors with chickens and the kids come over and want to see them and it's like a direct experience or growth from, from the farm.
I love the sheep there.
You do love the sheep there. So I just wanted to share that like, it is an educational program, but it's an educational programming that's far reaching in ways, as someone else said, that you don't always know. It's like deep in different places that are not always obvious, like an adult from, you know, moving into town without knowing anybody and helping us settle.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rob Wallson from Granby. Actually, I'm on the board of Gifts of Love. Joined this past January. I was part of the team that had to come to this difficult conclusion. Just wanted to kind of add a suggestion to the pot here. This isn't a Simsbury town problem or issue to figure out on your own. This is Granby, Simsbury, Avon, Farmington, Hartford, all working together. It's not a $10,000 problem. It's, we have grants for $80,000 that aren't going to come to, we will not get again in the future, just as a matter of their source. And so it's, it's not small. Please keep that in mind as you think about it. But I really love to see the support that we have here. It's incredible to see. So we're all on the same page is the good thing. We just got to figure it out. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Maura Fitzgerald. I'm at 27 Castlewood Road here in Simsbury. I'm the board chair, actually, of Gifts of Love. And I have to say, I'm very much impressed that you all came out here and support our program, a program that we created years ago and we did realize the incredible impact it had on the community. But I have to tell you, as a board member, we have to make really difficult decisions. And this was one of them. It was not pleasant. It was not easy. It's not something that we just came up with overnight and said, hey, we're just going to close the camp and the, the education program. It all comes down to dollars and we can only stretch these dollars as far as we can. As a nonprofit, we get what we get and we have to stretch it as far as possible. So I really wanted to let you know that this decision was not, was not easy. And we understand that there was an impact behind it. And so, yes, we're faced with our decision and it was our decision. But again, we're open to whatever suggestions or ideas you have to see if maybe we can move this forward. But, you know, I'm open and listen. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, well, thank you. Well, let me, let me, oh, I'm sure, please.
Hi, I'm Neil Corp. I'm the person that the sheep hate. Just one thing really quickly. We've shared a lot about the kids of our community, Gifts of Love, how they share their message. As I say, I'm a boy from London, New York, now here. One thing I've noticed, just being quite close to the farm, is that all the different people that you've seen using the farm, not just from this community, but you've seen all these different businesses doing these team building. You've seen schools, different schools, like Everett Walker I saw there, Miss Potter I've seen there. I've seen a lot of different people from all different backgrounds. So it just being now a Gift of Love farm, vegetables, which is really good, there must be an opportunity there to share that love. I've seen so many people use it all different ways. It seems a shame it's just going to be for one use, that you'll see when you drive by. These people here have picked those vegetables, they've dug the weed in from all different backgrounds. It's something that I feel it'd be a shame just to see it become a working farm, which is what I'm expecting.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm Greg Stock from Maura. I can't remember his name, but I'm just curious if the towns came together and families came together and raised, you know, I think it's about 200,000, it's necessary. If that was raised by November, would you reinstate the program?
You know what? A sustainable plan?
You know what, let's, let's just, you know, let's have that conversation another time, but right now, we're, we're doing public audience. So everything should be directed toward the Board of Selectmen. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before?
I just wanted to address the man's last comment. Apparently I wasn't clear when I spoke. But there, all the volunteer groups will still be coming out there. All the corporate volunteers, the family volunteers, we welcome education experiences out there. We just won't have the formal program, but it's not going away. Our love for families coming there and what everybody has gotten out of it, we still love and we would love to continue. And, you know, I love the comment about, let's just start a dialogue.
Excuse me. Let's, um, thank you, Susan.
Let's just start a dialogue.
Okay. Yeah. So you know what, I just want to pick up on that last point. Usually I don't comment on, on public comment, but I do want to say I'm very touched by the number of people who came out tonight, especially the children. I'm very touched by, by the stories that I've heard and how meaningful the farm is to so many people. And when we look at the six of us, our, our first obligation is to make sure that we're honoring the deed. And that's work that we're doing right now because I, part of the deed requires that a form of educational programming be provided. So we're working on understanding exactly what that means and that's going to guide the next steps. But just speaking for myself, I'm very interested in continuing the conversation, looking for collaborative and creative solutions to keep this kind of programming alive and well in Simsbury. And I wanted to see if any of my fellow board members wanted to add anything.
Not at this time.
Okay.
I'm going to share the appreciation for everybody coming out.
Thank you.
I guess, Eric, I would. I, I think a lot of the spirit of tonight is that, I mean, keep in mind that the town of Simsbury doesn't currently fund this program. Gifts of Love has made a determination that they can't. So the answer, a lot of the answer really has to reside in this, this spirit tonight of all the constituents that care about this coming together and trying to come up with solutions. Because if the, if the thought is that either the Board of Ed or the town is just going to step in and solve this financial, that's just not going to be the solution. So I think the, the spirit here, certainly an incredible statement about the value of the farm, but I do just want to point out that, you know, those of you who care are going to have to start some community effort that's going to have to operate independent of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Ed and obviously the Gifts of Love exclusively. So I did just want to reinforce that point.
And just really quickly, I just want to, once again, thank all of you for coming out. And I especially want to thank the Gifts of Love board members who came and past board members. Just to give a little background, some explanation, because that shows that you're already starting that dialogue and that's really important. And you are all part of one community there with Gifts of Love. And that, that is based at the farm, but what's really encouraging is that you all can talk to each other. So keep doing that. It's terrific to see. And, and we're always here, you know, to hear suggestions, you know, can we help? But I think Chris is right. You know, this is going to have to start with all of you. But thanks for coming.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? And then we'll continue on with the business of the meeting. Thank you. We're going to start with a short presentation on the Tobacco Valley Solar Project. I asked the company who, to provide an update on the construction, which started in May and is expected to wrap up in a couple of months. Aaron Svedlow is Director of Development for Tobacco Valley Solar and he'll be giving the presentation tonight. Thanks for being here.
Great. Thanks for having me. I thought we had a huge turnout, but. So I'm, I'm going to just breeze through a few slides here. There's some, you know, basic background information about the project, kind of as a refresher, but I'm really here to answer any questions you might have about the project and kind of where we go from here. So this is a 26.4 megawatt project. It'll plug into a substation on site. We did get our approvals from the state and from the town this past winter, but we actually started a few years ago designing the project and doing the due diligence associated with the project. It's 135 acres off of Hoskins Road. One of the great things about the site is not a lot of it is visible from public roads. Certainly, a lot of it's visible from private residences, but less so from public roads. And we are selling the renewable energy to Eversource and other utilities. So as I mentioned, we really started this thing three-plus years ago. A lot of due diligence went into this. The project was originally approved by the Signing Council back in 2017. We got regulatory approval for a power contract, which is a key element of a project in July of last year. Interconnection agreement with Eversource last August and our stormwater permit and D and N plan finally this past winter, private construction. So I think this slide may be unnecessary, given the stage of the project at the moment, but the elements of a project, a solar project here, this is a fixed array, the panels don't move. There is a pile driven into the ground. There are some panels attached to the top of the pile. Then there's inverters. These are about the size of a Toyota Corolla and they're dispersed throughout the site. They take the energy from the solar panels, convert it from DC to AC, so it can be put onto the grid. And then all of our cables are underground. There's some switch boxes. We have gravel access roads and quite a bit of stormwater controls. The Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is involved with the project. They're out here at least monthly. We have third-party inspectors on site weekly. We have independent engineers that work with us on the project, third-party engineers. So there's multiple layers of inspections going on in the project. So where are we at in the process here? As the first selectman mentioned, we started in May with clearing and grubbing. We also did something unique with this project site. We seeded the entire facility prior to starting construction. So all of the former agricultural fields were plowed up in sort of late winter, early spring. And we put down our permanent seed mix. So there was a warm season, a cold season, mix went into that. And then that all grew up prior to us starting construction. Now, certainly some of that's been impacted again and dug up and regraded, but actually the majority of the site is vegetated and that's that same vegetation we put in back in March. So we've done the grading, the stormwater controls are in, the roads, the access roads are in, piles. Took a little liberty with my cross out there. They're about 90% done, well over 90% done. They will be completed this month. That's one of the sort of noisier pieces of this, that's that tapping noise that folks might hear. Panels are starting to be installed. It was there today, the back sixth of the project, eighth of the project or so has, has got panels on it and most of the panels have been delivered. The inverters will be coming later this week, Thursday and Friday this week. Collector lines are starting to be installed and the town inspectors have been out looking at some of our trenches and electrical systems. Switchgear will be installed later in September. And then we have, the next few items are associated with us getting interconnected into the grid, into the existing substation. And then ongoing, as I mentioned, we have inspections, lots of inspections. Been doing quite are in, piles, I took a little liberty with my cross out there, they're about 90% done, over 90% done. They will be completed this month, that's one of the sort of noisier pieces of this, that's that tapping noise that folks might hear. Panels are starting to be installed, it was there today, the back sixth of the project, eighth of the project or so, has, has got panels on it, and most of the panels have been delivered. The inverters will be coming later this week, Thursday and Friday this week. Collector lines are starting to be installed, and the town inspectors have been out looking at some of our trenches and electrical systems. Switchgear will be installed later in September, and then we have, the next few items are associated with us getting interconnected into the grid, into the existing substation. And then ongoing, as I mentioned, we have inspections, lots of inspections. Been doing quite well with our inspections, when there are problems, they're fixed quickly, they're fairly minor, and we've been getting glowing reviews from everybody from the Connecticut Deep to the Connecticut Siting Council. So just continuing on with our construction schedule, we do expect racking system installations to be completed, again, I'm taking a little liberty with that date because it's today, but probably in the next couple of weeks, and then all the modules and everything else coming in. So our target is to be completely online and finished in November with final acceptance in December or January of next year. But most of the noisy, sort of invasive, construction activity will end, end of August and into early September. So just a brief pitch to our website, we have some information there about the site, that's a phone number that reaches my phone, you can reach me anytime, also that email address. My colleague, Chris Thumann, is here, he is the asset manager for the project, so once the project's complete, I will kind of drift off into the background, I'll still be available, but Chris gets the pleasure of continuing on with the project for the rest of his life. I mean, the project's life, somewhere in between. Anyway, any questions for me, about anything project-related? I know nothing about your educational programs at farms.
What questions? Yeah, Cheryl.
So, full disclosure, I live very close to the project, but, so I drive by several times a day, and I notice that while you seem to be doing a great job, I know the staging area is going to be removed.
Yes.
But there's a lot of, like, even when I was coming here tonight, you were closing down, I guess workers were getting ready to leave, and there's a lot of workers who crossed the road there at the triangle, and during the summer, there isn't as much traffic, but school starts in a week or so, and I was watching workers running across the road and waiting, and cars flying by, and I'm a little concerned about what happens with all those parents driving down the road, that it's.
Late for school, yeah.
Yes, school buses, the whole thing, and my question is, do you have any extra safety precautions coming online for when school starts? There's also going to be lots of kids in that playground that's right there, you know, and people walking around, and it's been fairly quiet, you know, because it's summer and people aren't around as much, but it's about to get a lot busier there.
Yeah, that's, that's good feedback, so I certainly understand the concern of additional traffic there. I'll speak to our construction manager.
I'm concerned for your workers, too.
Yeah, no, no.
Like I said, I watched these guys running, and then a car, and running, and then a car, and I was a little worried about that.
Yeah, it's, it's not a great intersection in general.
Well, it's just because of the triangle, you know, people are looking, like, who are coming, you know, down county, are looking up over their shoulder to see if anybody's coming down Hoskins, and they're not necessarily looking at who's running across in front of them, they're waiting to see if the car is coming, and then they're going to go. And there's your guy running across the road.
And I know one of the things that was talked about a little bit was, you know, do we need a flagger at that location? We've, we've avoided that to this point, and I actually don't even know what would be required if we did get one.
No, I, I understand that, but I just think it's about to get a whole lot busier at certain times of the day.
So I'll, I'll speak to our construction manager, we'll keep an eye on it if we need, certainly additional signage would maybe be the first step, and then evaluating what else we can do, and talking to the town.
Even if flagging some of the crossing, wherever they're going to cross, you know, because they cross and then they come up towards the staging area where the parking is, and it's.
Right, right.
All along that road.
Yeah, and kind of syncing up the schedule of kind of rush hour and when our guys are getting there and trying to flesh all that out.
Well, 8:30 in the morning is going to be a nightmare for, as is 3:30 in the afternoon.
Understood, so we'll keep a close eye on it, and I'll talk to our construction manager.
For everybody's safety, I mean, that.
No, agreed. And we will be, I mean, point taken, we will be done in, in October with the most of the staff there, so hopefully it'll be a sort of brief period where, where those issues could arise, but we'll keep an eye on it. Yeah, I crossed that road today on a buggy, and I, I understand the concern.
Yeah, like I said, I go by there several times a day.
Aaron, I know that you're working with neighbors on some screening in some specific locations. Can you just give an update on where that's at?
Sure, sure. So we'll be doing our landscaping work starting in September, so I have met with a selection of butters that have unique views or are uniquely oriented to the project, so we will be working with them to, to install some, some additional landscaping for them in addition to what's on the project site. So some of those draft plans will be coming around this month, and then they'll be implemented in September.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I do just want to reiterate, those are very unique circumstances, it's, it's not necessarily something we are offering to, to all butters, it's just those with unique orientation of their homes, so.
Okay. All right, thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for having me, appreciate it.
We'll move on to the First Selectman's report. I wanted to share that I'm, I'm very proud of our community for the overwhelmingly positive feedback we've received about the rainbow crosswalk that was painted at the end of June by the Performing Arts Center. The plan originally was a temporary installation to coincide with LGBTQ Pride Month, so in the coming days, I wanted to share that Public Works will be returning the crosswalk to the standard white colors. My intent in painting the crosswalk was to create a symbol of inclusion that represents the kind of community that I hope Simsbury strives to be. However, being a welcoming place should not be reserved for a particular time of year, and that's why I am supportive of a permanent rainbow installation near the Performing Arts Center, and I've heard from dozens of people in our community who feel the same. I asked staff to review the current crosswalk and the feasibility of making it permanent, and staff's recommendation is in our packets tonight. Their recommendation is that some kind of a, a rainbow marking or display be on, moved away from the parking lot and on the, the trail itself, where there isn't vehicular traffic, and that's something that's later on in our agenda that we'll be talking about tonight. An update on the new park construction by the Flower Bridge, the contractor has been obtaining product approvals, procuring materials for the project, and completing a plan for the abatement of the home to be demolished. There was a minor delay in securing an acceptable abatement subcontractor for the project, which caused a delay in the demolition of the home. Although this is, there has not been continuous activity over the past couple of months, construction is expected to ramp up this month and September, and landscaping is anticipated to be completed at the end of next month. The anticipated completion date for the project is still in November. Concerts on the Green, downtown Simsbury's concerts on the green will be wrapping up the 2019 season Saturday, September 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM with a special show featuring Sweet Daddy Cool Breeze. The concert will be outdoors at the Simsbury Historical Society. September 14th is the date of the Simsbury Grange Agricultural Fair, admission is free, and the fair runs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 236 Farms Village Road in West Simsbury. And lastly, Beldon Forest in Simsbury is the first forest in Connecticut to be included in the Old Growth Forest Network. On the 25th of October, which is a Thursday, there'll be a dedication ceremony starting at noon near Boy Scout Hall, followed by a walk in Beldon, and everybody is welcome. Let me turn it over, oh, I have one more item. We'd like to give an update on boards and commissions that have vacancies, and there's just two that I wanted to highlight in particular. One is our police commission. Per charter, this particular position needs to be someone who is registered as an unaffiliated voter, and Culture Parks and Rec, per charter, this particular position needs to be filled by a registered Republican because it's replacing a Republican who's resigning. If anyone who's interested in these opportunities can submit a volunteer form on the town website, you'll find that on the town clerk's page, and now I'll turn it over to Maria.
Great, thank you. At your desk this evening, we have provided a revised fund balance appropriation spreadsheet for you, now when we get to that item on the agenda, and I have also placed a suggested motion and background regarding a recommended appointment, excuse me, interim appointment for our town assessor position. That will lead me nicely into news and notes, so many of you know that David Gardner, our assessor for nearly 23 years, is retiring from service. I deeply appreciated his work ethic and his dedication to our community. He was truly invaluable during the analysis and evaluation of the recent 690 Hot Meadow and 632-640 Hot Meadow abatement applications to really ensure that the town's interests were protected. While David is retiring from us, he has decided to join the town of Farmington as their assessor, and I do certainly wish him well and all the best in his new endeavor. An update from engineering, the Aquari, excuse me, the Aquarian Waterline Replacement Project that has been occurring on Firetown Road is continuing, and most of the main line work is now complete. Individual connections to the, the main line is going to continue, we expect that to continue through early October. When that work is done, there will be temporary pavement repairs that will hold through the winter, and we will be paving Firetown Road and Old Mill Road in the spring of 2020. News from the library, they are now officially able to accept passport applications. This is certainly a service when our regional purbe court stopped providing it a number of years ago, a service that residents definitely missed, and on occasion, the library was hosting passport days that were very popular, and folks are really appreciative of this initiative. So if people would like to submit their passport applications through the library, we have contact information there for, for folks. News from our planning department, this is a really terrific accomplishment, our building official, Henry Miga, was recently recertified as a Master Code Professional by the International Code Council. He is one of only 800 individuals to receive the Master Code Professional designation in the world. It's a really vigorous and just challenging process to obtain that sort of vacation, and I think that really speaks to the level of his knowledge and professionalism, and just, again, we're very fortunate to have somebody like Henry and staff, and he was actually recertified, he has had that designation for almost 19 years now, and at the time, he received his original designation, he was one of about 140, so he was one of the early folks to obtain the certification. And one of his professional journals, the Building Safety Journal, recently had a really nice feature article on him and his experience and his accomplishments, so we've provided the link in the report, and I would encourage folks to take a look at that. From our police department, we have another retirement. After 25 years of service, Sergeant Mark Critts is retiring. He was initially hired as a patrol officer with the department in 1994. He's held numerous assignments in the department, such as Community Service Officer. In that capacity, he engaged in a number of programs for the community, such as the Child Safety C Program and the Citizens Police Academy. He, again, has been a sergeant since 2010, he was assigned to the Training and Administrative Services Division, and back in 2015, he did return to the patrol division. He has been a longstanding member of the Honor Guard, a firearms instructor, and a bicycle officer, he's received numerous awards, and again, we definitely want to wish him well in his retirement. And a, and a party is not yet planned, but once we have that information, I will be sure that we, we forward that to you all. Included in your packet this evening are letters that we have sent out to residents in the Muscat Trail and West Street neighborhoods, that is regarding upcoming sidewalk and multi-use trail repair work. I did want to bring this to your attention, because I, I'm really truly excited to see our sidewalk assessment and study and the capital investment that this community has made really begin to come to fruition, and as we begin to see those upgrades, it's, it's truly an investment in our infrastructure and will make us a stronger community. So again, just wanted to point out a couple of those projects that will be coming up over the next few weeks. Good news for our social services department, as you'll recall, in July, we had mentioned that the Youth Service Bureau Enhanced Grant, the state had postponed releasing that grant application. They have since allowed us to officially submit that application, and due to a surplus of funds, we believe that we will likely see an increase of almost $5,000 over our previous year's allocation, so that's definitely some good news to report. And lastly, from the town manager's office, due to our favorable LAP and workers' compensation claims experience, along with the overall financial strength of Kerma, which is our, our insurance carrier for those, those policies, the town and Board of Ed have received a Members Equity Distribution check. We have actually received that, it's just short of $56,000, so that's wonderful to, to add to our budget, and we thought this was just a really, you know, I think tremendous number to share, so they began this program in 2011, and we have received in aggregate just over $300,000 back from our carrier as a result of the Members Equity Program. So again, that's a lot of really good work on staff, as well as our insurer.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I bring in a big check?
No, I, I, I mean, I thought a normal-sized check was appropriate. We did have the option.
We did a big check a couple of years ago.
Something to put extra zeros in.
It's all about the photo op. Okay, I'm going to move on to selectman action. Item A, the proposed name for the new park by the Flower Bridge, just wanted to give a tiny bit of background. The Board of Selectmen solicited feedback from the community on what to name the park. We received responses from a wide number of people, I counted about 50 submissions, and then we formed a work group with representation from Board of Selectmen, Culture Parks and Rec, and the Flower Bridge Committee to review the names and provide the recommendation. And the recommended name is, drumroll, Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge, and I'd like to just ask Culture Parks and Rec Director, Tom Tiberzki, just to give a little bit of summary of how you, how the group landed in that particular place, I thought that'd be helpful.
Okay. Do you need help? So, the, the three-member committee met about a month or so, three weeks ago, and went over each of the suggestion, each of the suggestions that were made, and there were a lot of thematic suggestions in there, Betty Hudson Park, Flower Bridge Park, other individuals who, who have lived in town or are currently living in town were also nominated as well, but there was consensus in the committee, from the committee members, that they wanted to recognize, the park to recognize that there was water access at this, at this particular location in this park. And then there was one creative suggestion in there for Hopbrook Landing, which, for those of you who don't know, Hopbrook is where our river access is actually going to be with the canoe and kayak launch, so that's running alongside into the Farmington. So that's kind of where the name, I guess that's where the name came from, the gentleman who submitted it identified that as his reason, and there were other committee members who felt that the Flower Bridge should also be recognized as well, so that, so that's where the, the longer name came in, so we have Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge. And, you know, the group felt comfortable pushing it, moving the, the recommendation forward to your, to your board.
So just to be clear, the name would be Hopbrook Landing, and then "at the Flower Bridge" would be sort of in the, the subscript?
That's the way I would imagine it, yes. So if you were sending out invitations or, or to a, to a reception there or an event, you know, the park is Hopbrook Landing, subscript, at the, at the Flower Bridge, so if we had a sign entered signed by the side of the road, it'd be Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge.
Okay.
I think is what, that's the way the group had envisioned it.
Okay, well, I'd like to open it up for questions and conversation from the board.
I'll jump in.
Sure, Mike.
I have to agree with an earlier comment we heard, I think that's too long a name. It's a very good description of what's going on there, it is where the Flower Bridge is, it is Hopbrook, the stream that comes in there. I just, I do feel it's, I think people are going to abbreviate it, and to me, I believe I saw the Flower Bridge Park that I really liked, and also honoring Felix, who frankly gave his life for this country and this, my opinion, and town. So I'm not going to go along with what was suggested, but I, I, I don't think it's bad, that's not where I'm going. But let's have a discussion.
Yeah. Others?
I have to agree with Dan Littner, who spoke earlier, it's too long. It's, even if it was just Hopbrook Landing, I, putting all those words on a sign, I don't think is helpful, and, you know, we've been going around town, putting new signage up and trying to highlight, you know, places to go and things to see, and that's just a mouthful for, and, you know, if you put that on a bike trail sign, it's still going to say Hopbrook Landing, or you're not, it's not going to say Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge on the bike trail sign. So I think, you know, pick one or the other, but not both of them.
Chris?
So if, if, if it's Hopbrook Landing at the Flower Bridge, that name is too long, and people will abbreviate it and basically call it Hopbrook Landing, but if, if it's really Hopbrook Landing with "at the Flower Bridge" being kind of a tagline, I think it does work, and I actually kind of like it. I think it does honor both the Hopbrook and the connection with the river, honors the bridge, it's kind of a, more of a classy approach to a name than simply, you know, putting. It's kind of a, more of a classy approach to a name than simply, you know, putting a simple name, but it is going to be abbreviated to, basically Hop Brook Landing.
I think the group, not to interrupt you, I think the group, the nominating committee, I think they recognized that, and like, just for all the reasons you just said, I think that's how they eventually settled on that, with the tag, you know, kind of the tagline at the end.
So I can support it in that context.
It was a distinguished name.
Yeah.
I think with the understanding that it's going to be Hop Brook Landing, because on all the short signs around town and everywhere else it goes, it's going to be Hop Brook Landing. So, because it's not going to, you know, even if you put on one of those signs, you know, that have the arrows, you know, go this way to the park, that sign is not going to say Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge.
Probably not.
So it's going to be Hop Brook Landing. I mean, it's, if you want to designate, I mean, I agree with Chris. I mean, it's a nice designation, and if you had said Flower Bridge Park, I would have said, "That's great, too," you know, because it is, you know, the main, a feature of the park, you know, that's obviously central to its character.
Was there discussion around Flower Bridge Landing?
I don't believe there was on Flower Bridge Landing.
That was one of the considerations.
It wasn't.
Really, we came up with, of all the submissions, of the ideas, there wasn't just one that we thought told what it was about. We didn't, we sort of eliminated the idea of having someone's name, because we wanted to have a name that said what it is. A landing is a place near water. It is on the Hop Brook, and once people realized it is on the Hop Brook, they go, "Oh, that kind of makes sense." I know it's a long name, but the Flower Bridge is also a huge draw, and people, it's iconic, and people know it, so it kind of tells where it is, especially if you're from out of town, perhaps, you know, if you don't know. So, you know, it's certainly up to you. Those were our thoughts, you know, coming forward. It's in your hands.
I just, I get into all of this. So one of the things I found interesting is a number of people called me today, "Who cares about Hop Brook? We don't know it's there, we don't, it's a little thing, no one really cares about, the Flower Bridge is the big thing."
Right.
And my thought is, well, that's kind of what justifies having Hop Brook Landing in there, because it introduces the Hop Brook, introduces the river, introduces kind of a new aspect of town in a way that people haven't really related to it before. So I accept the criticism on some level, but I actually thought, well, that's, you know, this is kind of branding, and so there's a brand element to it. I do think we have to acknowledge that one half of this is going to be a tagline, right? It can't, people are not going to call it Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge. It's going to be Hop Brook Landing, and then "at the Flower Bridge" is a tagline that can be used with invitations, with, you know, all the written branding that goes with it. But I actually thought the not exclusively using the bridge was part of introducing something new to the branding concept, so I respected that.
I like that.
Sean, is there anything you wanted to add?
Only that we're three for three, and that we send the request to the naming committee and then summarily reject it when it comes to the Board of Selectmen, so good job, guys. This is the third time we've used the naming policy committee, and then again, we beat it up, so we probably should look in the future if we're going to name something, perhaps more guidance or perspective, before just sending folks off to do work and then criticizing it when it comes back in. But yeah, I am fine with Hop Brook Landing as the name, and then somehow working into the motion that we notate that it's "at the Flower Bridge."
Okay.
I think that makes sense. So you're going to move effective August 12, 2019, to approve Hop Brook Landing as the formal name for the new park being constructed at One Old Bridge Road, with the understanding that "at the Flower Bridge" will be part of the tagline? Is that the appropriate way to make it?
I think so.
The official name is Hop Brook Landing with the tagline.
Is there a second?
Adding in, is that, Chris, does that get to the spirit of what you were saying?
Yes, generally. I was okay approving the motion as it was and allowing the tagline to kind of be merged out of the process.
So let me.
So I mean, unless, I'm just thinking through the implication of us formally approving landing at Hop Brook with designating the rest as a tagline, which isn't necessarily 100% consistent with what was recommended to us. I'm not objecting to it, I'm just thinking through the ramifications.
My only point to making the motion that way is to be actually mentally clear that, to your point, we're going to abbreviate it to Hop Brook Landing, so officially, the name is Hop Brook Landing, but the full understanding is we are accepting the recommendation for invitations and otherwise. If we're going to call it a tagline, then I just think we need to be clear with that.
Yeah.
But I think for signage and things like that, it's Hop Brook Landing, it's Hop Brook Landing, because that's just too much. It's, you're going to end up with these huge signs that have essentially two lines on them.
Yeah, Sean, I'm okay with a motion as you stated it, because it really just specifies the intent.
Yeah.
Is there a second for that motion?
Wait a minute, let me, I'm sorry, I'm just, this is a bit legalistic. Are we approving the name Hop Brook Landing, or are we approving the name Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge, which is what was recommended?
So the motion I made was to officially name it Hop Brook Landing, with the caveat at the end that the understanding would be "at the Flower Bridge" would be considered part of the tagline, but not the official name.
I personally would rather vote for the name as presented, as opposed to formalizing, you know, the tagline element to it.
Is there something else?
This motion is actually changing the name from what is being recommended.
Yeah.
I would prefer not to do that personally.
But I guess the point is, if we officially name it Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge, then that's the official name that goes on the signs, goes on everything else. But it sounded like our intent was to use the "at the Flower Bridge" as additional verbiage, not as part of the name.
I think, would you think that it would be on the main sign as you walk into the park, but not on every little sign that's directional?
Yes, that's what, that's kind of what I was picturing.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to have the one, you know, the stand-up pillared sign when you drive into the park, it's going to say Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge. But for all of those directional signs that are going to go out on Route 10 or wherever, it's going to say Hop Brook Landing. Because otherwise, either the letters are going to be so small you can't read it, or they're going to be...
So we're blowing up the public work budget because we're going to pay for more steel.
Or it's going to be two lines.
So could we approve the name, the full name, Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge, and then clarify in the motion that "at the Flower Bridge" would be in smaller letters and not part of every sign that signifies the bridge?
I can go along with that.
Well, can we say, just for official signage purposes, it's Hop Brook Landing?
Right.
I don't know how you, I'm just thinking out loud here.
I don't want to step anybody's toes, so just let me know if you want me to answer.
Please.
Well, and I don't in any way want to denigrate what the committee did, because I like the whole concept of the name. I'm just afraid the practicalities of it are just too much.
So Tom, I guess my question is, did this get discussed on the part of the committee? And if it did, what's the response?
I think it's the way you tagged it before, both of you have tagged it, Chris and Cheryl, is the way that the group discussed it, that the main sign, the entrance sign, would say Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge. That's the formal name of the park. The general name, signage, and, you know, day-to-day thing would be Hop Brook, the park will be called Hop Brook Landing, I think.
Okay.
But, you know.
Maybe I'll attempt a creative motion here. Would there be a motion, effective August 12, 2019, to approve Hop Brook Landing at the Flower Bridge as the formal name of the new park being constructed at One Old Bridge Road, with an understanding that the, that "at the Flower Bridge" would be a subscript? Is that the term? And not part of every sign that is directional?
Or part of directional signage.
For the park.
Not to be a procedural pain in the ass, but my motion's already on the table, so...
That's true.
I'm sorry, Sean.
True, true. Would you like to?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Just so we can move on.
Okay, I'll second Eric's motion.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
So the main sign is, it's basically the Hop Brook Landing.
At the Flower Bridge.
At the Flower Bridge. And then if you're having signs around town and so forth, it'll say Hop Brook Landing this way.
And people will call the bridge what they call it.
Take back what I said, we did take your recommendation, so we're one for three.
And they will, they're going to call it the Flower Bridge Park, they're going to call it Hop Brook, they can call whatever they want, as long as they go down and you did, I guess.
Well, thank you for serving on the committee.
Yes, thank you for your work on the committee.
Item B, I expect will be a shorter conversation.
Actually, that's pretty good for a naming.
I probably like the Sims City Park, honestly. I like that one. The Simsbury Sail and Stroll. Good one, too.
Stop and Shop has generously offered to donate more than $3,400 to the Simsbury Social Services to support our food programs. Is there a motion, effective August 12, 2019, to accept the Stop and Shop Feed a Friend Program donation in the amount of $3,414.60?
So moved with our thanks.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C is a proposed Youth Services Bureau Advisory Board procedure. So last summer, we adopted the procedures for the juvenile review board, and then this summer, the town went through a similar effort to update the procedures for the Youth Services Bureau. For folks who don't know what it does, well, what the Youth Services Board focuses on juvenile justice, mental health needs, positive youth development and outreach, and the update outlines really the purpose of the Bureau, the membership composition, and the goals for the group, and there's a draft in your packet. Is there anything that staff wanted to add?
Yeah, just one quick point. The membership composition is reflective of the current group with one exception. The Youth Service Bureau grant does look for a member of a nonprofit or private agency that serves youth, and that was one place in our membership that was lacking. So as we were working on these procedures, we wanted to make sure that we were including that. So the YSB and staff are reaching out to some of our nonprofit agencies in the region that serve youth in Simsbury, and we will be bringing a recommendation to you at a future meeting for a potential appointment to that position.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
So the other board has a Board of Selectmen member on it, correct?
Correct.
And this one does not?
Right, my understanding is that has not been the case, but if there's an interest from the board, we could certainly add that position.
No, I just wanted to make, so that's the other difference, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay. Is there a motion, effective August 12, 2019, to adopt the proposed Youth Services Bureau Advisory Board procedures?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Item D is a proposed traffic calming demonstration project grant. So, you know, we frequently hear from residents about, who are concerned about the speed at which people drive, especially on our residential roads, and staff is proposing a traffic calming demonstration project that would use roundabouts and lane narrowing to help slow down traffic on David Drive, and we have the opportunity to apply for a grant valued at about $20,000.
I should probably recuse myself.
Yeah, you probably should.
I just realized what street you were talking about.
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm trying to 14, hold on.
There, if we received the grant, there would be no financial contribution by the town, and I just wanted Maria just to explain a little more, just so the public understands what this would be about.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. So something that my internal traffic authority group has been discussing on a regular basis are the concerns that we receive from folks in that neighborhood about people using it as a cut-through, about speeds that people are traveling at, and speed enforcement can only do so much. So we have discussed a number of different potential traffic calming measures that we could pilot along that neighborhood, again, to see what might be effective. This grant just became available. It would certainly allow us to pilot these traffic calming measures to see if they would work. We've consulted with our public safety officials, and the temporary rotaries would not be an impediment to them being able to pass through as needed. So again, we thought this might be a creative solution to help that neighborhood that has been, again, struggling with speed.
Any questions?
Just one. And I think it's a very creative solution, I'm really interested to see how it works out. What's the thinking in winter? So would they be up in winter, and are we able to plow effectively and everything?
Right, so the thought is, is that we would likely take them down in winter for that reason, but during warmer months, keep them installed and see if that helps. And also, there would be some lane narrowing as well, with some line striping.
Yep.
Did the public safety community have any concerns?
No, no, so again, our police chief is part of our internal traffic authority group that, excuse me, reviews these sorts of issues, and we did also consult with the fire district to resolve any issues that they might have with it.
Okay, great. Well, I think it's a neat idea. Any other questions or conversation?
I've seen these in other areas, they do work, that there is a concern that I've seen where they're not as visible, so the drawing that we have of this just needs to have enough elevation so that they see them as they're pulling up to them. I've seen some of the ones in some of our neighbors' towns where people end up driving over them. So, not my guys.
Not a garbage truck.
Okay. Is there a motion, effective August 12, 2019, to submit the CROG Act of Transportation grant application and authorize Maria Capriola, town manager, to execute the grant application, and in the case that the grant is awarded, to accept the grant and authorize the town manager to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Someone summon Sean if he doesn't hear us? All right.
Come back.
Just lost 50 feet of your front.
Thank you for the donation.
They just narrowed your route.
Next.
Now go home tonight, thank you.
Absolutely. Item E is tax refund requests. Is there a motion, effective August 12, 2019, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $51,999.47 and authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Now, item F is a fiscal year 2019-2020 fund balance appropriation. After the budget referendum, the Board of Finance voted to use $420,000 of reserves to create mill rate relief. The budget that was approved at referendum didn't anticipate the use of fund balance, but instead a change in the tax collection assumption rate. Therefore, the use of fund balance is considered a supplemental appropriation, and it needs the Board of Selectmen approval. This was tabled at our meeting on June 18th, pending our bond rating review, and I just wanted to see if there was interest in the board in taking this up now. And I think a piece of additional context is, because the town is expected to end the year in a positive position, it's actually pretty unlikely we're going to need to do the transfer. Is there anything you wanted to add, Maria?
I think that's a very good summary. Right, I do believe that this transfer is unlikely. There are two factors in that. Again, one is that our budgeted collection rate versus our anticipated collection rate, there are generally excess revenues there, but if you'll recall, we also budgeted a little over $300,000 with a net impact of about $200,000, I believe it was $44,000, net impact for an anticipated contribution to the teachers' retirement system, and going through a budget development process, that was looking to be very likely, and then at the last minute, that legislation did not actually go through. So we do also have some additional capacity in the budget as a result of that as well. So again, I think the likelihood of actually needing to do this transfer is very slim, but the Board of Finance at their last meeting had asked for a status update, and if we could bring this back to you all for your consideration.
We are respectfully considering what I moved to table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, why don't we second and then have some conversation?
So I guess my question is, if, what's the request from the Board of Finance to do this if, in all likelihood, it won't need to be used? I guess that's, and I'm assuming there's a good reason in there.
I'm looking forward to this.
I think they're just changing their assumptions on how they brought forth the budget to referendum, because not all members are comfortable using a 99% collection rate, and they don't want to set the precedence for the next budget year where they're automatically assuming a 99% collection rate. They want to keep it at the 98.5 and utilize the fund balance like they have in the past, and then the next budget year, they'll, actually, in November, I believe, they want to discuss the tax collection rate again for the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2020.
But this is all a contingency at this point, right? Because it's a mechanism that we actually won't need to utilize?
Yeah, it's pretty much a formality at this point.
And so their reason is, I mean, we have this debate over a collection rate, so their reasons, they like the lower collection rate process. Okay, so I would support table.
I would, too.
I would also.
Okay. Okay.
And if I could just quickly add, our bond consultant will be attending the September Board of Finance meeting within the larger conversation of debt management. And, you know, our bond consultant has recommended that we do not routinely use reserves for operating expenses. And again, that will be part of the conversation, of this larger conversation that the Board of Finance would like to have in terms of, again, how we budget the collection rate, how we budget for fund balance. Do we continue with current practices? Do we modify that? Because, as you'll recall, there have been a number of recent motions in past years to do this, but then the funds aren't actually needed. And so, again, just sort of, I think, probably refining and improving that process is something that the Board of Finance would like to have a conversation about.
And Eric, can I just add? The whole collection rate issue is totally moot at this point because this, in all likelihood, won't have to be used. So I don't want to, I wouldn't want to proceed with this simply, you know, in that context, so.
Okay. So we've got the motion. It's been seconded. Is there any further conversation?
Just that, again, we're not putting the town in any financial harm. Essentially, all we're doing is saying we're not going to transfer money that we don't need to be transferred, that we would just transfer back to the same damn account. So, again, this doesn't impact our financials. It doesn't stop us from paying any bills.
Yeah, there's absolutely no impact. In fact, the transfer's not even actually made, even if you did approve it. It's just, it runs a negative. If it were to happen, it would run a negative in our P and L.
Right. And just to build on what Chris said, though, this is why, again, we shouldn't be necessarily changing assumptions on the collection rate or budgeting for mill rate relief through the usage of reserves unless we absolutely have to. And again, you know, we maintained, as this worksheet shows, a substantial amount of reserves, whether we move this money or not, whether we need it or not. I'm thankful that we did budget the $300,000 because that is going, the teacher's retirement or some other state cut is going to come. And again, I'm not interested in taxing folks for something we don't need, but that money is going to be used. So there was an overtaxing a couple of years ago due to the $2.5 million hole that never ended up being, but this, I think, is a former conservative way. So, and the Board of Finance is in a tough spot because they have to go off the governor's budget, they have to approve a budget long before the legislature gets their act together, so it's not the Board of Finance's fault. But now we get the benefit of hindsight, and we get to see that we didn't need to do this. And again, I don't have any problem looking the taxpayers in the eye and telling them, again, we didn't tax you for this. We didn't build this into the mill rate, and, again, there's no need to transfer it, so.
I think it's much better for transparency for the taxpayer to leave it where it is and say, you know, if this happens, then we can address it. But I don't think putting money, you know, essentially in somebody's pocket and saying, "Okay, don't spend that yet, but, you know, maybe in case you need it," is really the most transparent way to handle the taxpayer dollar. So I would, you know, as Sean said, the Board of Finance has done nothing wrong here. It's just a question of how we handle this and how it appears to the taxpayer who's, you know, trying to keep track of where their money goes.
Yep. Any other conversation?
Actually, just to be clear, because they're going to ask for a status update at the next meeting, which is fine, so you all are tabling it, and if we need the money during the year, we can come back and bring the motion back, but you don't need any additional information from them. It's just to see how the year goes and...
Yeah, if it becomes necessary, let's talk about it.
And we know what it is, but it's just...
Yeah. We're not refusing to do it, which is, it doesn't appear to be in need for the funds at this point.
Okay.
We'll keep it alive by tabling it. If we voted on it and said no, then that would...
That'd be different.
That would end the issue.
Yeah.
Tabling it, we're actually respecting the Board of Finance by continuing to have an open mind towards it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that issue is tabled.
In the future, motions to table are non-debatable, but that's okay.
Open dialogue, Sean. That's all we're doing.
Same.
Item, we did item F. Item G, so this item, the board previously discussed in executive session. It's a proposed settlement agreement regarding the valuation of a retail property at 44 Albany Turnpike. That's the Best Buy location. What this settlement does is it essentially takes the middle point of the town's assessment and the property owner's assessment. Are there any, anything that staff wanted to add or any questions that board members have at this point?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to approve the attached settlement agreement for the tax appeal on the property located at 44 Albany Turnpike as presented and authorize Town Attorney Robert DiCrescenzo to execute the agreement?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have three public gathering permits tonight. Item H is the Latimer Lane PTO is requesting a public gathering permit for a fundraiser that entails a fun run on school grounds and a 5K on local roads. The event is scheduled to take place September 22nd. Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Latimer Lane PTO's 5K and fun run, September 22nd, 2019, as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item I is the Trinity Church and Terriffill Village Association's Fall Festival. This is scheduled for September 15th, and it is largely unchanged from what took place over the past six years. Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Trinity Church and Terriffill Village Association Fall Festival, 2019, as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And this next public gathering permit is for the Simsbury Fly-In. This one's scheduled for September 22nd. The event is similar to previous years with between 10,000 and 12,000 people expected. Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the 2019 Simsbury Fly-In, Car Show, and Food Truck Festival as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item K, we have various staff appointments. So the town charter requires that the Board of Selectmen appoint a Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer and a Code Enforcement Officer. And with the staffing transition in the Planning Department, this is something that hadn't yet occurred. I wanted to ask Maria just to briefly summarize this one.
Great, thank you. So I think what's also important here is that all three of our professional staff members and the Planning Department do provide backup for one another on all enforcement-related matters, whether that's wetlands or zoning. So in addition to designating a primary individual to serve as Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer as well as Code Enforcement Officer, we're also asking that the board designate the individuals as Assistant Code Enforcement Officers where applicable. You might recall that last fall, when we updated the job descriptions for the Assistant Town Planner position, we flagged that position as the Primary Wetlands Agent, and we flagged the Co-Compliance Officer as the Primary Zoning Agent for the town. So those two individuals have been serving in that capacity. I'd also just like to note that statute does require our land use agencies with the regulatory responsibility for those functions to officially designate those individuals. That has occurred. And we have also taken care of updating their various designations to enforce a number of our ordinances. So we do have a number of ordinances where the Town Manager has the authority to empower individuals to enforce them, such as our Stormwater Management Ordinance, our Blight Ordinance, and we have taken care of those designations. So we would be seeking this. Again, this is in the charter, and we've provided a brief background on all of our land use professionals in terms of their experience and qualifications, all of whom are qualified to perform this work.
Good. Are there any questions?
Would this have to be three separate motions, one for each person?
Yes, we've prepared it, so it would be one for Robin Newton, one for Janelle Mullen, and one for Mike Glidden.
Okay. Is there a motion retroactive to December 17, 2018, to designate Robin Newton as the Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer? This designation shall remain in effect until rescinded or Ms. Newton's separation from service, whichever comes first. Further, is there a motion to designate her as an Assistant Code Enforcement Officer?
So moved.
Second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there a motion retroactive to April 16, 2019, to designate Janelle Mullen as the Code Enforcement Officer? This designation shall remain in effect until rescinded or Ms. Mullen's separation from service, whichever comes first. And further, to designate her as an Assistant Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion retroactive to September 10 of 2018 to designate Mike Glidden as an Assistant Code Enforcement Officer and an Assistant Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer? This designation shall remain in effect until rescinded or Mr. Glidden's separation from service, whichever comes first.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And then finally, the staff recommendation to appoint the interim assessor. Is there anything you wanted to add, Maria?
Again, just reiterating that David has recently retired from service, and we are completing the recruitment process, but in the interim, we would like to appoint Francine Beland, our Assistant Assessor, as our interim assessor.
Right. Is there a motion to appoint Francine Beland to the position of interim assessor effective August 12, 2019, until the date upon the permanent assessor begins work in Simsbury? And further, to increase Ms. Beland's salary in accordance with her collective bargaining agreement during her interim appointment as assessor and for her other employment-related benefits as an affiliated employee to remain in place. At the conclusion of her services interim assessor, and if she is not appointed to the permanent assessor position, Ms. Beland shall be permitted to return to her position as an assistant assessor with salary and employment-related benefits assigned to that position.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Congratulations. Item I is the proposed general wage increase for unaffiliated positions. So this came out of the Personnel Subcommittee, which is recommending a general wage increase for staff in unaffiliated positions. This is typically evaluated once a year. The Personnel Subcommittee this time is recommending we set aside a pool of $28,822, which is equivalent to 2.35% general wage increase, to be given to non-union staff at the Town Manager's discretion. Wanted to see if Chris or Sean wanted to add anything from that discussion.
I mean, I think this is consistent with the intent of the board in the past, that we empower the Chief Executive Officer in the past, the first selectman, now the Town Manager, to apply wage increases as they deem appropriate, whether they choose to do a standard increase for all or merit-based. We did have a spirited discussion about that, but we felt that it was important to empower the first, or, excuse me, the Town Manager to make that decision. Because, again, obviously, as the Chief Executive Officer or Administrator of the town, it was important for Maria to be in that, in that decision-making capacity. We also felt strongly that 2.35 was a thoughtful recommendation from the Town Manager, consistent with contractual negotiations that we've undertaken, other towns have undertaken, is to try to be as fair and equitable with the entire community or staff community as we possibly can be. So I think that was the general discussion that we had.
Yeah, those are two very good points. The only other subtlety I want to add is this amount does not include, upon the formal performance review of the Town Manager...
Correct.
And upon achieving a satisfactory or above level, per the contract, Town Manager's increase would be pegged to this unaffiliated pool amount. So after the performance review process, you know, we'll be coming back for one additional role to be compensated in the pool, so.
Yep.
Any other questions or conversation?
One point, just to, Eric, you had said this was item I. It's actually L. Just want to make sure.
I hate the way they capitalize.
I know. We're all over you for the part of the term.
Thank you, Eric. I know. I got to dust off that book.
Don't worry about it.
The only reason I know it is because Lisa memorized it, so.
Oh, there you go. Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to approve a pool of $28,822, which is equivalent to a 2.35% general wage increase for non-union staff, retroactive to July 1, 2019, to be awarded at the Town Manager's discretion following successful completion of annual performance reviews? For the probationary status non-union employee, the increase can be granted following successful completion of the probationary period and would not be applied retroactively.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Item M is the proposed Town Manager's Goals. So at our last meeting in July, we approved the goals, and then the Personnel Subcommittee basically ranked the goals in terms of a high, medium, or low priority, and you can see where those are in your packet. You know, once we approve these, we'll make sure we get them up on the town website so they're, you know, easily accessible. Was there any feedback or questions about our prioritization? Anything you wanted to add, Chris or Sean?
The only clarification that some of these folks might feel are, why aren't they higher? Or otherwise, we did try to recognize bandwidth in a year's worth of time, and, you know, it's very easy to put everything as high or everything as the same, but recognizing there's only so many hours in the day, so many priorities, and running the community is another thing that's not listed here, which is kind of important, as is dealing with us and all the other things that happen. So we thought this, we had, I think, a very thoughtful and in-depth discussion on this, but if someone were to see in the community or in the departments, medium or low, don't think that, we don't think that it's important, but again, recognizing that, again, there's only so much capacity in a year's time to get something done. And something might be started as low or medium and move up to high as it becomes the year, similar to our capital improvement plan is the easiest way I would look at it.
Yeah, that's an important point. I think everything on here is on here because it's very important.
Yep.
But not everything can be equally.
Nope.
So that's why this is really just giving direction to Maria and her team so that they're focusing on the things we want them to focus on.
I have one quick question, and I know I wasn't at that meeting, but is it the intention of this board to have another selectman goal-setting session to update the Board of Selectmen goals for...
See how excited she's been.
Yeah, so following the election this fall, once you have your full new board in place, I think it would be very important to do this at the onset of the two-year term to help frame your work for the next two years. And additionally, for new members, Melissa and I will help with providing a new member orientation, just to help, again, orient them to the form of government and their role as a selectman.
And that's something I think we could probably get on the calendar sooner than later, because while the new board will be somewhat different, it will be mostly the same, based on the math.
Yeah, some of it will change. I just thought it was important to say that, you know, we're not going to just keep this one set of goals forever and that, you know, it is our intention to update these as the board changes and as priorities change.
Yeah. Any other conversation? Is there a motion effective August 12, 2019, to adopt the prioritization of the Town Manager's Goals for July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item N is a proposed Town Hall and Eno Memorial Hall posting policy. So this is basically an effort to codify the existing procedures for posting flyers and other materials. In summary, postings should be from civic groups, nonprofits, and governmental organizations, not from political, and no religious displays are permitted. The Town Attorney has been consulted on the proposed policy. Anything else, Maria, that you wanted to add for context?
Sure, so while the policy is administrative in nature, Bob did think that it should come before you all, we actually get inquiries sometimes as frequently on a daily basis, and oftentimes our volunteer greeters are really unsure how to answer the questions, as well as sometimes our volunteers at the senior center. And so again, we thought that this would just be a really nice, simple sort of guideline, if you will, for our volunteers and our staff. So when they get those inquiries about what can and can't be posted, that there's something documented that they could refer back to if, say, another staff member might not be available to answer their question.
How is that going to work at Eno? I think there's different staff there in different departments, and if somebody walks into the senior center and says, hey, I have a great, you know, flyer for pickleball, but they may not walk into Social Services and say, here I have a flyer for a canned food drive, you know? And those are, you know, different people who are going to have different opinions as to what goes on the Board.
Right, right, and so again, I think that right now, staff is sort of coordinating and working on those postings, but again, that the purpose of this is that we'll have a uniform, you know, standard that we're applying in terms of what is being posted.
Okay.
So I've got a question. This is specifically in Town Hall in Eno, but in Eno, there is also SCTV. So it's really in the public portion of Eno versus SCTV.
That is true.
Okay, and I'm fine with that. I just, it just dawned on me, it's not all, it is open to the public, but it's not part of the public.
Well, there's also the DAR space.
Yep.
And we could add that sort of exception, if you will, to the policy, just a simple statement that it does not apply to spaces occupied by other entities such as SCTV or DAR.
Non-governmental.
Yeah, we could certainly add a sentence to that effect.
I mean, it says, Eno Memorial Hall Posting Location, Main Floor Bolton Board.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I missed that, you're right.
Yeah, and then Town Hall is the wall.
Yep.
And the greeter's desk and manoir.
Okay.
Good point. I think, I think it's all right.
Any other questions? Is there a motion effective August 12th, 2019 to adopt the Town Hall and Eno Memorial Hall posting policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item O is the appointment of Labor Counsel. Mike Harrington, who is the town's Labor Attorney, is moving to a new firm, Ford Harrison, later this month. When the town appoints legal counsel, we appoint the firm, not the individual, and it's staff's recommendation that we move to appoint Ford Harrison to retain our current attorney, and there would be no change in his hourly rate, is my understanding. Maria, did you want to add anything to this recommendation?
Sure, I think an important point to add is that the firm of Leclerc Ryan is actually dissolving, and so Attorney Harrington and his colleague Attorney Beth Smith, who we've also used as backup, unfortunately needed to find a new home, if you will. The quality of their work has been very excellent, they're incredibly responsive, their public sector rate is very reasonable for the market in Connecticut, and for those reasons, we would recommend that we move with Attorney Harrington to his new firm. But again, we do appoint the firm as opposed to the specific attorneys. They are anticipating that move will occur on or around August 14th, so later this week.
Are there any other questions?
Do we have any other information about the rest of the firm? I mean, when you appoint a firm, as you say, that is your backup. Those are the people who are, in case Mr. Harrington is not available, are going to be doing the work. And I think it's important to know who's in that firm, because those are going to be your backup people.
Sure, you know, one thing I could do if the Board would like, again, Attorney Beth Smith has been our primary backup for Attorney Harrington, and she is also making this move with him. So generally, my experience is that we'll have a primary and a backup, and I could certainly forward her bio and her resume onto the Board.
I just think it's important for transparency to say-
Sure, absolutely.
...who else is there and what they do.
Sure, we could definitely forward that information to you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to appoint the firm of Ford Harrison, anticipated on or around August 14th, 2019, as Labor and Employment Counsel for the Town of Simsbury through December 2nd, 2019, with the understanding that staff has the option to conduct an RFQ for Labor and Employment Counsel in the future? And further, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the engagement letter once it's completed?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Appointments and resignations. Item A is, so the town had the opportunity to appoint three representatives to the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Committee. We thought the Flower Bridge name was long.
Uh huh.
This committee serves in an advisory capacity to the National Park Service. We put out a call a little over a month ago for applications, and the Personnel Subcommittee conducted interviews and made the following recommendation. Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019 to recommend for appointment Mike Ryan, Sally Rieger, and Stephen McDonald to the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Committee to a three-year term?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, I just noted a typo in the motion. I know, it's my fault, I apologize, there was a typo in the motion, that should be move effective August 12th of 2018.
Oh.
I apologize for that, I did not-
I didn't.
...tell that earlier, sorry.
There you go.
We all missed that. Wow.
This is what happens when you have a big packet.
I know. It's late.
Sure, I count on that stuff.
Without amendment, so I asked if there was any conversation. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item B, we have a resignation from the Economic Development Commission. One of the members got a new job, and she currently has a spot that was designated for someone with communication and/or tourism expertise. And this is a position that needs to be filled by a Democrat per Town Charter. And Charmaine Seavey is one of the people who we interviewed previously for the EDC. She has a background in communication and currently serves on the Tourism Committee. And I consulted with Cheryl, as well as Bob Crowther, who's the Chair of EDC, and both shared with me that they would be supportive of Charmaine's nomination. But first, is there a move, a motion to accept the resignation of Caroline Meckel as a member of the Economic Development Commission and the Sustainability Team, retroactive to August 11th, 2019?
So moved, with our thanks.
Yeah, with our thanks. Chris seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And item C is the appointment. Is there a motion effective August 12th, 2019 to appoint Charmaine Seavey to the Economic Development Commission as a member with tourism and marketing expertise with a term expiring October 10th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item D, is there a motion to accept the resignation of David Moore as a member of the Board of Ethics, retroactive to July 10th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion effective August 12th, 2019 to accept the resignation of Brendan Walsh as a regular member of the Police Commission?
So moved, with our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to accept the resignation of Thomas E. Frank as an alternate member of the Zoning Commission, retroactive to July 18th, 2019?
So moved.
So moved with our thanks, or second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And-
Hang on, John.
Item G is resignation from Culture Parks and Rec. Is there a motion effective August 12th, 2019 to accept the resignation of Gerald Post as a regular member of Culture Parks and Rec Commission, retroactive to July 30th, 2019?
So moved, again, with our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, both from our regular meeting on July 8th, as well as our special meeting on July 15th. Were there any proposed revisions to those minutes? Okay, then they stand as presented. Are there any Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee reports?
Yes.
Cheryl?
I want to thank the Aging and Disability Commission for another successful picnic in the park on July 27th. It was a great event, enjoyed by all. The Community for Care is presenting on September 11th a suicide prevention program called Talk Say His Lives. It'll be at 6:30 PM at Simsbury Public Library, and it is going to be an introduction to suicide prevention, learning the warning signs, risk factors of suicide, and how you can help, some of the basic practices for talking to and reaching for help if you are confronted with a person in crisis. So I would encourage anybody who's available to attend and participate in the discussion.
Any other reports?
Oh, I have one other one, too.
Yes.
In the communications section of your packet is a picture of the logo for the 350th Committee. I think it's a really good composition of all the things that the committee was trying to put forward, and I think it's going to be a terrific logo for a great celebration.
Right, thank you. Thanks to all of Simsbury.
I think the Simsbury is a little funky on the 350.
You know what? That font was argued over and-
I also don't like the green.
-for a long time.
You should use Kelly Green.
Okay.
It's not white Kelly Green.
It's quarter to nine, any other conversation on that?
Are you done, Sean?
Okay.
Just kidding.
Moving on to the communications section of the agenda, there's one item I'd like to talk about, which is the crosswalk, but are there any other items that anyone wanted to bring up? Okay. I did want to have some conversation around next steps with creating some kind of a permanent installation, a rainbow installation. If it's not a crosswalk, then something similar in the area that would be an acknowledgement of Simsbury's welcomeness and to the LGBTQ community. I thought that a nice thing to do would be to have some kind of an open process where people could submit proposed designs. I think being on the path and off the road takes away a concern from, you know, traffic safety standpoint. And then my thought was October 11th is National Coming Out Day, and there could be an opportunity to invite any member of the community who wants to participate in actually painting the new design on the trail as a permanent installation. So I wanted to see what others think about that.
So you're talking about on the actual bike trail, or you're talking about the trail like into the meadows?
I think what we're picturing would be the actual bike trail outside the Performing Arts Center. And I think in part, what the design is may drive the precise location, but I thought just having a process that involved the LGBT community and figuring out what is that design would be the right thing to do.
I think that makes a lot of sense. My only other suggestion would be, and we can't violate zoning or signage laws, but is there a way to incorporate the playground fence somehow so that it's even further visible?
Oh, that's a nice idea.
Just because, again, the trail, the crosswalk is awesome because there's no fencing. So you can see it as you drive by, you can see it from all angles, and I absolutely agree with you, and I support it. If it ends up being on the trail, the only challenge is you have to physically be on the trail to see it. If there's some way to incorporate the trees, or the fencing, or something else, it just makes it even more visible in a bigger statement.
I think that's a really nice idea.
But again, leave it up to the artist to design it, yeah. But I'd be willing to, if there's a way to go through that process to get that appert as well. I think going through that process.
Maybe the rainbow guardrail. I mean, maybe a segment instead of putting it on the pavement.
Whatever, whatever the artists and the folks decide, but yeah.
I actually liked where it was, because it's a lot more visible than being on the bike path, but let's see what people come up with and what their suggestions are.
I mean, you have to be mindful of the safety issues on the path also with the lines and, you know, it's a heavily used area, so.
But let's give them a bigger canvas.
Yeah, I like the fence idea.
Good, I thought it would be, you know, a nice statement if we put this into a formal motion. Would there be a motion to create a permanent rainbow installation on the bike trail outside the Performing Arts Center where we would seek input from the community on the design and then paint it in a public ceremony on October 11th?
Move that.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just caution that if, for some reason, that is not approved or decided upon by October 11th, then maybe we don't want to just limit it to that, because things happen.
I would be okay with withdrawing October 11th from the motion, so we don't create an artificial deadline.
Right, I just don't want to put pressure on staff or anybody else who has to work